All right, well, the council has just returned from a closed session and I will ask our city attorney if there is anything to report.
Yes, there is. I want to report with respect to the item on the California Voting Rights Act. What I want to report here is that the city has been reviewing the issue of whether to consider changing from at-large elections to district elections. However, the city has not yet made a decision in that regard. But I can report at this point that if the city would decide to change to districts, there's a very substantial process that's required for that, various public hearings and others matters that would need to be considered. But this process will not be completed in time for the November 22 election. So the first election where there could be districts if the city chooses to go to districts would be at the November 2024 election.
Thank you, Mr. Perick. And I will now call to order our regular session and ask Councilmember Derris to lead us in a pledge to the flag. Thank you. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Here.
Councilmember Derris?
Here.
Councilmember Funk?
Here.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Here.
Mayor Moreno?
Here. All present. Thank you. Well, if you are attending this meeting in person, and many of you are, this is kind of exciting getting back to in-person.
Welcome. And for those of you attending on the webinar or on the phone, so glad that you're here. If you happen to be watching on TV or listening on the radio and you wish to speak at any item during public comment, you can call 805-538-2888. When you call, let us know what item, whether it's community forum or a specific item on the agenda that you'd like to speak to. Again, that number is 805-538-2888. And those of you on the webinar, you'll be able to use the raise hand icon and that's how we'll be able to address you. And those of you here, just be coming up to the podium like we did in the old days, right? 2019. Okay, let's see. Can I get an approval of the agenda?
Also move.
I'll second. But motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Mayor Protim Newsom. And we will waive the reading in full of all ordinances appearing on this agenda and the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the city council votes. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Derris?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno? Yes, ma'am. Motion passes. Thank you. And now we have a presentation, a proclamation proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Action Month. And we have Jennifer Adams, the CEO of Lumina Alliance. And I have asked Mayor Protim Newsom to read that proclamation.
Whereas Sexual Assault Action Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in Atascadero. Whereas Rise and Stand Strong officially merged on July 1st, 2021 to form Luna-Luma Alliance, an agency that serves survivors of sexual assault and intimate partner violence throughout all of San Luis Obispo County. Whereas although progress has been made toward preventing and ending sexual violence and providing support to survivors and their families, important work remains to be done. And whereas there is a need to focus on the individualized needs of sexual violence survivors. And whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and those living with disabilities increases their vulnerability to sexual violence. And whereas Lumina Alliance continues to provide a safe environment to those affected by sexual violence with crisis intervention, counseling, education, legal services, and emergency safe housing with the help of dedicated volunteers and professionals. And whereas Lumina Alliance has provided services to more than 935 people in the past year, including more than 4,852 collective nights provided for shelter clients and more than 2,130 hours of counseling. And whereas Lumina Alliance has created redefined SLOW, San Luis Obispo's first social marketing campaign, focused on parents and educators of preteen boys in an effort to prioritize frequent and quality conversation on topics such as gender, masculinity, and consent in an effort to prevent violence, harm, and assault in our community. And whereas the city of Atascadero strongly supports the efforts Lumina Alliance, their efforts to ensure that every segment of our society works together to better address sexual violence and helping survivors connect with services. Now therefore, on behalf of the city council of the city of Atascadero and in recognition of the important work done by sexual violence programs, I hereby proclaim April 2022 a Sexual Assault Action Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you so much, Mayor Moreno and the city council for this proclamation. Lumina Alliance is a nonprofit organization that was created by the merger of Rise and Stand Strong last year in July. Our mission is to empower those impacted by sexual and intimate partner violence through innovative advocacy, healing, and prevention programs. During the month of April, we look to engage in conversation with our community to educate and dispel myths around sexual assault and to foster a culture that supports survivors. Like many of you, we are saddened to hear about the multiple sexual assaults that have been shared by dozens of survivors on local media recently. This only illustrates what we know to be true, that sexual assault is underreported and that it can take months, years, or even decades to disclose. April is dedicated to creating a community that not only condemns sexual violence of all kinds, but actively works to fight against it. Throughout the month, there are many opportunities for community members across the county to learn about sexual violence and actions they can take to prevent it. Lumina Alliance and our sister agency Cal Poly Safer have planned a series of events, including a denim day gathering being hosted by our own Wild Fields right down the road here tomorrow evening at 5:00 PM. We encourage our community to wear denim and to share photos on social media with a message of support for survivors. We will also be participating in Take Back the Night, a candlelight vigil on the Cal Poly campus that is happening on Thursday evening. We'll invite you to join us for these events and take action during this important month. Please remember, if you or anyone you know is experiencing sexual or intimate partner violence and needs help, please call our 24-hour crisis hotline at 805-545-8888 to speak to one of our confidential advocates. In closing, we are so grateful for this opportunity to share about the work that we're doing, remind the community about these issues, and experience the support of our city council. On behalf of Lumina Alliance's Board of Directors, staff, and volunteers, we thank all of you for taking action this month to create our vision of a safe, thriving, and equitable community. Thank you so much, Jennifer. And thank you for all the work that you do. And if you like, we can come around and take a picture with you. That would be awesome. Love to honor. Thank you. All right. So as we get back to our meeting here, I have been giving this phone number for the last two-plus years, the 805-538-2888. It just rolls right off my tongue. And apparently it was in my agenda that we have a new phone number and I had not even seen that. So here's the thing, we have a phone number and we have a meeting ID number. So if you happen to be watching or listening to this, I need you to get out a piece of paper, write this down, or dictate it into your phone something. The call-in number is area code 669-900-6833. Let me repeat that. Call-in is 669-900-6833. And then there is a meeting ID number, which is actually longer than the phone number. So that meeting ID number is 889-2347-9018. I'm going to go ahead and repeat that again. It is meeting ID is 889-2347-9018. All right. I will give this again one more time during our meeting here. All right, we're moving on to our consent calendar. The consent calendar contains items that are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff and can be approved in one motion unless there's a member of the council or the public wishing to pull or comment on an item. So I will look to my colleagues and see if there's a council member wishing to pull an item.
Just a quick question for clarification on item number four.
On item number four. Okay, we've got a question on item number four. Is there any member of the public wishing to pull an item on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, why don't we go ahead and ask that question on number four?
So the question to staff is simply that, can we confirm that this action only applies to properties that became part of our Affordable Housing Stock before 2010? And that it doesn't, that it simply applies the rules that apply to newer units to those older units?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
And with that, is there any member of the public with that clarification wishing to comment or pull any item on it? Or no? All right, bring it back for a motion.
Approval of consent calendar.
I'll second. We have a motion by Councilmember Borbo, a second by Councilmember Derris. Roll call, please. Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Derris?
Yes.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno? Yes, ma'am. Motion passes. Thank you. And now we're on to updates from our city manager. And will that be you tonight, Ms. Christiansen? All right. Give me just one second. And I think while you're pulling that up, I'm going to go ahead and one more time for anyone listening, I'm going to give that call-in number and the meeting ID again. So if you're out there listening on the radio or watching on TV and you want to call in for any of the items, our call-in number is 669-900-6833. Once again, 669-900-6833. And then when you do dial that number, you're going to be asked for a meeting ID number. And that meeting ID is 889-2347-9018. Give that to you again. Meeting ID is 889-2347-9018. And for those of you watching, wondering where Councilmember Borbo is, he's here. His camera just doesn't happen to be working, so he is here.
And right before I jump into the city manager updates, I did want to note that that call-in number and meeting ID can also be found on the cover page of the agenda. So if you go to the city's website under agendas, you can click on the agenda and on the cover page, it'll also have that call-in number.
And that website is atascadero.org.
And then backslash agendas, and it'll get you there. Perfect. So first up is Urshine. We have another Atascadero Creek Cleanup Day. Urshine is returning on Saturday, April 30th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. We're also partnering up with ABC Church for this event, and we are very grateful for them helping out along with Councilmember Borbo and Traffic Records. There will be free pizza and refreshments after the event for all of our volunteers. Volunteers will meet at 9:00 AM at the southeast corner of Sunken Gardens. And the terrific support we've had over the last several events from the community volunteers, these cleanup events turn out to be really successful, and we can't thank all of our volunteers enough, Urshine and everyone else who helps to sponsor these. We're counting on great community volunteer effort once again. And again, that is April 30th from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. So if you're interested, please come on out. We'd love to have you. Brew at the Zoo is this Saturday, April 30th, from 5:30 to 9:00. There'll be a great variety of craft beer, wine, cider, kombucha, and seltzer. It's an exclusive evening at the Charles Paddock Zoo. So thanks, sorry. I can't multitask. I apologize. A great event at the Charles Paddock Zoo. There will also be non-alcoholic beverages and plenty of water available for designated drivers and guests. A variety of food as well, including tacos, hot dogs, Thai food, and sweets. Those are available for purchase. Lots of great entertainment, music, dancing, and games. Everyone who attends will receive a collectible glass and T-shirts will also be available for purchase. Online tickets are available now at www.my805tics.com. Again, www.my805tics.com. They're $40 per person plus a service fee. And designated driver tickets are for $15 a person. If tickets do not sell out, they will be available for $50 a person the day of the event, available at the ticket booth at the zoo beginning at 5:00 PM. Like I said, it is an exclusive event, so the zoo will be closed to the general public and the event is only available for guests 21 years old or over. And for more information, please call us at 805-461-5080. Also want to remind everyone of the Fire and Emergency Services Open House. We're celebrating the department's 100th anniversary. The open house will be on Saturday, May 7th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That'll be at Fire Station 1 on Lewis Avenue. It's free and everyone's invited. Event will kick off with a flag ceremony performed by local Boy Scouts. There will be the National Anthem and a ceremonial flyover provided by the Australia Warbirds Museum. There will be some exciting public safety demonstrations, including a live fire demonstration and a demonstration with the Police Department K-9 Unit. Event will finish off with bucket brigade games. Firehouse tours will be available and the entire fire fleet will be on display alongside antique engines from around the county. Live music will be provided and sweets will be available for purchase from Coastal Cravings. Firefighters Association will also provide barbecued hot dogs while supplies last. There are commemorative items for sale, including a fire challenge, fire challenge coins, T-shirts, pint glasses, and beverage tumblers. So mark your calendars again Saturday, May 7th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Fire Station 1 on Lewis Avenue. This will be the first year of Pedal to the Gardens here on Tuesday, May 7th, from 7:30 to 9:30. We're going to celebrate Bike to Work Week at the Sunken Gardens and on the front steps of City Hall. City staff will provide a light breakfast and refreshments to cycling commuters to the downtown area. It's a great opportunity to try commuting on two wheels. And the event will feature information on the Downtown Infrastructure Enhancement Project, which incorporates a number of new multimodal features to increase pedestrian, bicyclist, and transit access. So it'll be a great time for those who are commuting in on bicycle to kind of see what we've been talking about the last several years and what we're really looking to do with El Camino Real right there in the downtown. The project also features, the El Camino Real Infrastructure Project also features a number of safety features on El Camino Real for student travel, both to the middle school and the high schools. We're excited to see you there. And again, it's Tuesday, May 17th, from 7:30 to 9:30 AM. For more information about any events here in the city, you can always go to www-visitatascadero.com and we look forward to seeing you at all of our events in the next several weeks.
Be complete?
Good. So if you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have just one thing for clarification. On the Brew to Zoo, you had said that at the day of, at the gate, the door was $50. On the flyer, it said $45. So I don't know if you want to clarify?
Sure.
Which one is the mistake?
Sorry. Yeah, it should be $50. $50 day of, and they're $40 for sale now with the service fee, or $50 day of, assuming we don't sell out.
So bottom line, don't wait. All right. Next up is our community forum, and this is an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak to the council and address the council on something that is not on our agenda this evening, but over which we have jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and we set aside a total of 30 minutes for community forum. If you wish to speak, we would ask that you come up to the podium or you press the raise hand icon. Or if you're on the phone, let us know. Is that still star nine, Luke? Or is there a different? Still star nine. So if you happen to be on the phone, that's how you can participate in community forum. We will have the timer going so that it'll let you know as your time is up. And we ask you to state your name for the record. So welcome to our first speaker.
Thank you. Just on. My name is Nancy, and I wanted to talk about the Juan Batista Deanzo Trail. This is a national historic trail, and I'm specifically talking about the area north of 41 and south of Templeton. The issues are, the trail was created through a grant-funded, multi-jurisdictional effort with a focus on protecting the river, which is a watershed, plant life, wildlife, et cetera, as an important natural resource to the central coast. Currently, no agency is taking the lead to enforce the commitments made to protect this valuable resource, and that is likely in violation of a CEQA commitment made at the time the trail was approved. The signs on the trail entry show that off-road vehicles, fires, firearms, and dumping are prohibited by law. Three of those are violated on a daily basis. The watershed, the plant life, the natural contour of the river and banks, as well as the wildlife and their habitat are degraded by off-road vehicles daily. Enforcement of the rules is the responsibility of multiple agencies, but there appears to be no funding and no inter-agency agreements to facilitate enforcement of the rules. This section of the river from Templeton to the area just north of 41 appears to be highly used by off-road vehicles primarily from occupants of the homes along the river in that area. Preventing off-road vehicles is likely impossible without the help of the public. But making it known that violators will be prosecuted just might help reduce the illegal use and the damage to the watershed. Some of my action item ideas. Encourage the public to report what they see, where the off-road vehicles come from, where they go, and when they're on the river. Investigate offenders who live on the river and have daily access to the trails through non-permitted graded roads that they've created from their properties directly onto the river. Create a cooperative enforcement agreement between responsible agencies to allow one agency to enforce, even if it's over another's jurisdiction. This relates to Atascadero is responsible for the trail along the bank, but the county apparently is responsible for activity in the riverbed. Provide resources to have a volunteer river cleanup day at least once a year. I don't think there's been one since 2018. There's a lot of debris, appliances, cars. Consider monitoring the river via drones. I understand that officers in their cars can't keep up with the motorcycles. The drones would be able to see where they came from and where they go. And that's really the information that the officers need.
Thank you. You are at your three minutes. If you'd like to leave your list with the chief right there, and we'll make sure that that gets entered into the record.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just for clarity, I've already been provided a copy.
Thank you, chief. All right. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Let's see, if you could raise your hand. I think I see Ms. Maggie Payne on the webinar. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? I'm going to ask any of you who want to speak, if you would get up and move over to the podium, because I'm trying to sort of navigate between a screen and you here and people possibly on the phone. And so it would really help. And then that way I know I'm getting everybody and we're moving as quickly as we can. So because I did call Maggie on, let's go ahead and call on Maggie Payne, and then I'll bring up the rest of you here.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you so much. Well, hi again from the We Are the Care Initiative. My name is Maggie Payne. In addition to the proclamation earlier today, we also celebrate in April, Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so in preparation for 2022's Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, we've taken a lot of time to reflect on the children in our world and the role that they and their families play here in our local community. We Are the Care is incredibly grateful to Atascadero City Council for your prioritization of the needs of these children and the families in your community and for the foundation that you're helping to build to begin to alleviate the childcare crisis. We know that unlike other industries, the childcare market is not recovering at the same rate as other essential parts of America's economy. And we really appreciate your continued interest in what the children and families are needing and how you can help to assist them. So we're really excited to share with you that starting this month and then running through the beginning of the summer, we're actually launching a We Are the Care Community Voices Tour. This listening tour will be coming to a playground or a park near you. Our hope is to be able to truly listen to those that we hope to serve, and we're going to go straight to the source. So the families in our community have endured immense struggles over the past two years. And while there is hope in sight, this childcare challenge is far from over. We want to adapt our focus to the changing concerns, needs, and wants of parents and families. Every visit to a new playground offers us the opportunity to hear from different community members within our county. Each city and town has a different set of needs, just as each family has a diverse set of needs that are distinct from others. And so our hope is to hear what challenges that parents are currently facing, because a lot of it has changed over the past few years. And also offer the opportunity for families to celebrate and show love and appreciation for all of the local care providers and the crucial services that they provide. So our first stop on this tour was at Children's Day in the Plaza in SLOW. And it was wonderful to meet with the community and to get in touch with families, and we're really excited to continue that. So we will be setting up shop at different playgrounds all across the central coast. And please be on the lookout for dates and times. We'll be back soon to update you. I'll probably be back in a couple of weeks with some dates when we'll be places in Atascadero. I know that we're going to be at the lake park on May 21st for the Children's Day. So anyway, please see us there and let us know your feedback and what you're needing. So for ways to get involved with We Are the Care, please contact First Five in SLOW County or go to firstfiveslow.org. Thank you all so very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. And gentlemen here in council chambers, next speaker.
My name is Anthony Vasquez, and I'm spokesman for the Rin Canyata Trail Riders. And if I may, I'd like to give you a little overview on the equestrian community in the area. There are two city-owned equestrian arena complexes, and there are over 18 miles of horse trails in the area. We have top breeders, world-class trainers, modern boarding facilities, equine rescue ranches, equine therapy through mental health, barriers and barrier supply, saddle and tack makers, equine specialist veterinarians, 18 feet and seven tack stores nearby, hobbyists and volunteer drill teams, professionals, including endurance trail, mounted posse, arena show, racing and rodeo riders. Ranch workers are over 100 in the area. This is the home of the Wranglerettes. This is the home of the Atascadero Horsemen's Club, which was founded in 1964. We're also the home of the Atascadero Trail Riders, Rin Canyata Trail Riders, and the Atascadero Chapter of Heat. Equine-related businesses, activities, and community have contributed greatly to the spirit of the town. The problem is that the Juan Batista De Anza Trail, a heritage landmark site, a native vegetation preserve and popular hiking, biking, and horse trail has become dangerously infected. Or I should say infested. Motorcycles are present in number in spite of numerous signs prohibiting them by law. And the dangerous lack of responsibility and maturity of some motorcycle riders have put our community and the city property at risk. The city police have been contacted twice, and they have professed helplessness to enforce and dismiss the severity of the problem. The county sheriff's department says it's in the city limits, so they're not concerned about it. So I'm coming to the city council for your assistance in assuring our safety on city-owned land and protecting this landmark area from further incursion and damage by motorcycles. Some suggestions, law enforcement be more responsive in issuing citations. Use mountain bikes and ATVs to patrol the trails where access allows. And involve the sheriff's mounted posse in patrolling the riverbed in the areas inaccessible for mountain bikes. And I would also suggest creating a sanctioned area for the motorcycles that's far away from everything else. And I wanted to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Hi, next speaker here in the chambers.
Good evening, I'm Jody Smith. I've lived in Atascadero for 32 years, and I'm an equestrian. I ride the De Anza Trail in the riverbed and have for over 30 years. And I'm concerned about the degradation of the environment from the motorcycles. I understand that motorcycle riders need a place to ride, and I respect that. But however, the area in the riverbed is not appropriate for their use, nor is it legal. I am concerned for my safety, safety of my friends, safety of people that I don't even know. And I've heard complaints, and I've heard that people have been injured. And I'm concerned about that. And I would like to bring that concern to you. We all pay taxes in our town, and we all have the right to safety. And we have a responsibility to our environment. And I urge you to take this seriously and take action. People are being affected by this, they're being endangered by this. And our environment is being destroyed by this. So let's come up with a plan. I know you can do it. You're all elected to represent the members and people in our community. So please do so, and please act on this situation that affects the hikers and mountain bikers and people walking their dogs and horsemen. We all need to live together peacefully in our town, and we need to come up with a solution that we can all live with. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to actually go to the webinar now, do a little bit of back and forth, but we'll definitely get to everyone. Mr. Josh Cross.
Good evening, council members and member of the public. I'm here tonight to invite you all to our candidate's forum this Thursday evening. This is for the San Luis Obispo County District Two Supervisor Candidate Forum, which is April 28th. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Atascadero High School at the gym. We're going to have the bleachers pulled out, so there'll be plenty of seating for everyone. We've got our four candidates ready to go. We've got candidate Oslyn, incumbent Bruce Gibson, candidate Jones, and candidate Whitworth, all ready to answer questions. So we encourage the public and yourselves to educate yourself. And the voters are encouraged to attend and learn about these candidates and their issues. Post forum, the vote for county district supervisor is on June 7th. So you want to mark your calendars for that date as well. The other event I'd like to talk about is the Art and Wine Tour, which is May 6th. That's a week from Friday. We've got 20 businesses in downtown Tascadero signed up to pour wine for attendees. That's from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. at downtown Atascadero. You can get your tickets at the Atascadero Chamber website. Tickets are $20 now through May 1st as an early bird special. They're $25 from May 2nd through May 5th, and they're $30 on the day of event. And as usual, you can pick up your glasses and your wristbands at front of City Hall at our booth or in front of Central Coast Distillery. So we look forward to seeing everyone at that really fun event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Our next speaker in the chambers here.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Redden, long-term member of Atascadero's Will and long-term member of Atascadero Horsemen's Club. I'm not going to restate all the things that have people said already, but I will say that probably 15 or 20 years ago, part of the Anza group got together and created the Anza Patrol Group, mostly equestrians to help patrol and inform the police department of people, mostly motorcycles, who are getting into the riverbed. The usage now appears higher than when it was 15 or 20 years ago, and there's more damage to the official Anza trail, more deliberate jumps, et cetera. So would be nice to help get that restored to good trails like they're supposed to be for non-motorized users. Again, I think reiterating some other comments about having a joint area for motorcycles to use safely would be, I think, really benefit to them, because they should also have access to a safe area to, to ride their motorcycles, especially for kids who live locally. Thank you.
Thank you. Got our next speaker here in the chambers, and then I'll go to our hand in the webinar.
Hi, I'm Ann Colby. I'm here as a horseback rider, but I also have multiple friends who are interested in bird watching, bike riding, dog walking. Wide number of groups use this trail system, the De Anza Trail regularly. And we're all able to interact and share equally with each other, with I don't think much of any fights being produced between those groups. But the dirt bikes, the off-road vehicles are another story. They're so dangerous, they're so destructive. And they're, to animals, they're predators. There's a predatory sound and look and feel to them that terrifies horses. So they're really, really dangerous to us. And a big part of the problem is most of the people who are out there are youngsters, are kids, whose families have apparently provided them with these powerful machines and just turned them loose out there with no supervision whatsoever. So it's not effective for us to yell at them. We're just the old people being bossy. It's, you have to get to the families, to the parents that are permitting this. But I think, I don't know if you all use that trail system, but it is such a fabulous asset to this community, the beauty of it. But it's known for having some of the best bird watching sites in the county. And all of that is threatened by this noise and commotion and fumes that's going on out there. And if you don't use it regularly, you don't realize how bad it is and how helpless we feel to have any impact on it, unless we gain some backing from you all to help support us in trying to tamp this down so that we can enjoy this beautiful piece of nature that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colby. I will go to Wendy Lewis in our webinar, and then the other two folks, you will be up.
Hi, my name is Sandy Overmeyer, and I first want to say that now.
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead, Sandy.
Oh, okay. I was threatened by motorcyclists. They wear head cams. You report what they've done, and you know what they do? They take pictures of your license plates of your truck and vehicles and post it on a task, everything Atascadero. My license plate was posted, so I would be a target of these people. Now, I went to the police, and these people are known, the juveniles are known to be retaliatory towards others. I have pictures of them with the sign at Home Depot Arena lifting their bikes over. Right there's the sign. We took pictures of them, and they retaliated. A couple of days later, a truck plows into the arena. Now, I know some people say, oh, that was an accident. No, I don't think so. The tire tracks were straight, right on, and it would take not a little fragile motorcycle to run into it. It took a truck straight on hit and vandalized the arena. We went to the police. Can't do anything, it's, doesn't warrant. And these are pretty much the people that did it. But it wasn't, I forget the term they use, but they were helpless in doing anything. So you know what I had to do? I had to go to the Department Motor Vehicles. I'm the victim, and have my license plate changed. I had to go to the trouble of protecting myself, because the police department isn't. And I'm sorry, but I'm a little upset with the police department right now. They're not protecting me. I have to take law in my own hands and go to the Department of Vehicles and then try to hide from these people, so they don't vandalize my truck like they did the arena. It wasn't an accident. The tire tracks, it was a heavy vehicle. I used my mistake certified tractor tracker for the Sheriff Department when I was in the posse. So I know how to read tracks. It was dug in, pushed by a heavy vehicle on purpose. So no, it wasn't, they weren't doing little duly do circles. It was vandalism. These are more likely the people that do it, but nothing's been done. And that's all I have to say. I have to protect myself, so what do I need to do? Gary Pepper spray, I mean, I don't know, it won't go through a helmet. But anyway, that's all I've got to say. If you want the pictures, I can give them to you.
If you please leave those with the chief, thank you, Ms. Overmeyer.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to ask Wendy Lewis, who is in our webinar, and then our final speaker here. It looks like our final speaker for the evening. Ms. Lewis, if you want to unmute.
Good evening, council, this is Wendy Lewis with the El Camino Homeless Organization, or ECHO. I'm calling in to remind the community of an incredible event that ECHO will be hosting this coming Thursday. It's our annual Empty Bowls event, which is a major fundraiser to support ECHO as we support our unhoused neighbors, get back into housing. The event will take place at Atascadero Bible Church this Thursday from 11:30 to 1:30. The community has already been incredible, and we're about to sell out. So if somebody is interested in attending and taking part of delicious soups and artisan bread, artisan bowls, and delicious desserts, please visit echo-shelter.org. Tickets are $75, and you get a meal pack for a family of four, along with two gorgeous bowls that you get to hand select. The bowls are the best, I think, we've ever had. We have hundreds and hundreds of handmade artist bowls that are just incredibly gorgeous in different textures and shapes. Love to thank all the artists that contributed to that amount of bowls we have. But also love to thank the, the council and their support. We have several council members that actually became sponsors. So I'd love to thank council member Boar Bo as a sponsor, and council person Newsome as a, from Mudok, thank you, financial. Would love to thank also some of our celebrity servers that are city servants and part of the council. So you can visit one of the celebrity servers, Atascadero Fire Chief Bryson, Atascadero Police Chief Masterson, Heather, or Mayor Moreno will be a server as well as City Manager Ricard. So we are super excited for the event. Again, it's this Thursday, ECHO's Empty Bowls. You can visit echo-shelter.org to find out more. And just love to thank everybody who's contributed already to make it a wonderful success. And we look forward to seeing the community at the event that will support, again, ECHO and the services that we provide to the unhoused in San Luis Obispo, and especially northern San Luis Obispo. Thank you for your time, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. And our next speaker here in the chambers.
Good evening, council. My name's Jeff Osland, local resident, business owner, and a candidate for District Two Supervisor. Would like to add on a little bit about the candidate forum, which will be hosted by the chamber conference here in Atascadero at the high school on Thursday evening at 6:00 p.m. I think residents hopefully will come out and become educated on who's the best candidate and who can represent District Two the best, which is the new district, which includes Atascadero. And Atascadero obviously has a big stake in the new district too. We are the largest entity in the district. We're also the only city within the new district. So I encourage folks to come out to that. Thank you. Secondly, I received my fire letter in the mail. I received two of them. I'm not sure, and I've raised this question several times in the past, or probably over the last 10 years or so, how this is done? Does everybody get a letter, or do we really go out and inspect? Because the two pieces of property that we have in the city are mowed down pretty well. One is a commercial piece of property that does not have any vegetation on it. And then there's my home address or my business. I can say three, but I have two letters. I'm just curious if there's a way we can save postage, and if we're doing that. Always a concern. Third of all, for the evening, I've been on this soapbox for a while. I'm going to continue. It's a great day in Atascadero when you cannot find parking in the downtown. However, I'm still hoping that we can do something to resolve the parking issue in the downtown sooner than later by creating maybe four or six spots around the downtown and not waiting for us to redo El Camino Real for parking that are 15-minute pickup zones for our restaurants and for our businesses. The city of Paso Robles heard that loud and clear two weeks ago, and they've already changed their parking plan in the downtown now, where you don't have to enter into their meters for these parking spots. They added more pickup zones. We're a forward-thinking city. I hope we can do this sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, we still have three minutes left on community forum. If there's anyone wishing to speak. Star nine, or raise your, if you're on the phone, raise your hand on the webinar, anyone here? Not seen anybody. Okay, so we'll go ahead and close community forum. And because there is still three minutes left, if anyone by 6:53 has And because there is still three minutes left, if anyone by 6:53 has decided that they want to speak, I will reckon, let us know, like kind of wave or, you know, let the chief or somebody know or raise your hand on the webinar and we will get to you at the next earliest opportunity. I will briefly address a few of these. We don't, we don't, anything brought to us at Community Forum doesn't become a subject of conversation because it's a Brown Act issue. If it's not agendized, we're not, we can't talk about it. But we can briefly address a few items. So with regards to the Juan Batista Trail and the concerns that we've heard from, from several of you, I would ask our Chief Masterson if you might comment on what is, what has been going on with that? What are the actions we can or have been able to take or what are the issues?
I certainly will. This particular issue came to light, at least to my office, probably about 30 days ago when I received an email from one of your constituents. Since then, we've done over 20 patrol checks of the area. We've responded to two particular calls about motorcycle riders in the riverbed. We did take a report of the vandalism to the horse corral. I do apologize, I gave you my business card. I haven't heard about you calling and not getting satisfactory service and we'll look into that as soon as you and I connect. But we have been responding to the area as best as possible. Keeping in mind, we only have so many officers and we do patrol check when we can. But so far, we haven't caught any motorcycle riders, probably because they see us a long way before we get there. We drive these rather obvious black and white cars and they're rather astute at looking for us. We are looking at doing some possibilities of some extra shifts, utilizing our side-by-side in the riverbed. And yes, although it's a lot of the county jurisdiction, we can still enforce codes and laws in the state of California. I would like to point out that as much as I hate to say this, the vehicle code section cited for utilizing the ends of trail on a motorized vehicle is an infraction and we can't issue a citation not in our presence. And even if we could, it's a traffic ticket. So that's about all we can do. We are amping up our enforcement of things and looking to see if, quite frankly, a few traffic tickets can deter some people and word spreads rather rapidly if we can manage to do that.
Thank you, Chief. And we know that you and the City Manager's Office will continue to work with, work with folks to see what other potential solutions are out there. I know some were recommended and there's always a possibility of other things that could be.
I can't swear to the brass of you of this, but I do know the Sheriff's Department had a couple of extra officers in the riverbed, I think, two weekends ago. There were two side-by-side or two four-wheel drive trucks down there with four deputies, no doubt responding to the same type of issues.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could make a comment. A mention was made that there's not been any cleanup in the, in the riverbed. But every year in September, there is the annual creek cleanup day that I've participated in a number of years. But that happens every September. Also happens in the Tesco Creek, but there's a number of folks that helped clean up the riverbed and also the Beaver Brigade does a fair amount of cleanup. I don't know how many times a year, but many more times than annually. And, and so a lot of stuff is hauled out of the riverbed by volunteers. Although I'm sure it's not enough and some of the stuff gets so embedded, it's extremely hard to remove. But anyway, there is something happening in that regard.
Thank you for reminding us of that, Councilmember Borbo. I would also like to, with regards to Mr. Osland's question about the two fire letters and do we actually review the properties? I'm going to ask our Fire Chief Bryson to come on and briefly address that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I can address the weed abatement. The letters did go out. Most people received those last Friday. So our phone has been ringing off the hook over the last few days. Just so you know, we do physically go out and do an inspection. We go at the end of March and we drive the entire town. Of the 11,000 or so plus properties, I believe we have in town, I think we mailed out about 3,500 notices to people. And again, we, we get calls about it being a citation or, you know, something really, really negative, but really any parcel that either has weeds currently or has the potential to have weeds by June 1, meaning that people have cut, but if there's a potential for regrowth, they should be receiving a notice. So we're, we're not intending to cut. It's just a good reminder for people to maintain those weeds. And we like to say that any parcel that a mower could or a weed eater could be used on their parcel, they should receive a notice. That gives the, the council has, by issuing the declaration that weeds are a violation, it gives us the ability to go ahead and make sure they're maintained throughout the rest of the year. So I can't speak exactly to those parcels that were mentioned. And again, one in the downtown does sound odd, but we do go out physically inspect, physically look, and there is always a room for error. You know, maybe there was one that was, the next parcel over was clicked by accident or something. But again, it's a, it's a notice. It's not a citation. It's a notice to maintain those weeds and keep them mowed down year-round. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Chief. And anyone who does have a question can certainly call the number that is on that letter because it really is all about compliance. We want to prevent, we want to prevent fire or when it does happen, we want to prevent the, the spread of it. I sound like I'm talking about COVID, but I'm not. We want to slow the spread of any fire that does come. So thank you very much, Chief. And I want to say too, with regards to, I want to thank Wendy Lewis for mentioning Empty Bowls that'll come in up on Thursday and the Chamber Forum. I got the notice and I see that you can actually attend via Zoom. So if you can't be there in person, in person's always the best, but if you can't be there in person, there is a Zoom option. So check that out. All right, I think, I think we've addressed it all. Come up before, was she up there before? 6:53. You know what? I will err on the side of caution and we will go ahead and bring on Deborah McCrell and that will be the last, the last Community Forum speaker.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers for hearing me tonight. Thought I couldn't slip in a little sooner. I just wanted to say, and I wanted to commend our partnership in the new plan that has been put forth in working with the homelessness. I know we've been looking at a, a new strategic plan and the County Board of Supervisors have met to forward our plan to at least try to attack the problem of homelessness. And they've started a new division under the Department of Social Services. And this is something that our city, as well as so many other cities in our community, you know, we have that population and I'm so pleased also that, to know that through the police department and social services and all of these other areas that we could get this strategic plan going. So we can at least start working on this kind of, it seems like an insurmountable task. But these are the baby steps that I'm just so pleased in the part of Councilmember Susan Funk that I know has worked really hard on that and with our community. And I'm really proud of that. And thank you very much for everyone's participation in that.
Thank you, Ms. McCrell. All right, so Community Forum is officially closed. This has been a nice, robust contribution. I like this. So thank you all who have come tonight to share with us. And of course, you are welcome to remain throughout the rest of the meeting. So we're on to our first public hearing and that is the One Centennial Plaza Plan Development over on East Mall. I will first ask if we have any expertise and that is, have any of us council members had any communication with anyone outside of this public process that might influence our decision this evening? So I'll go from my left to my right.
None.
None for me? None for me? None. Thank you. I will turn this over to our Community Development Director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to talk tonight about another step in the process towards the future of Centennial Plaza and the vacant parcels that surround it. We met recently to discuss this topic and also the Planning Commission reviewed this topic to take a look at the potential of a plan development. So what the steps have been so far, we did remove the abandoned structure that was council direction previously, that happened in December of 2021. And tonight, we're looking at step number two, which is the potential adoption of a plan development zone that will help guide the future of these properties, how they might develop, how they might not develop. From there, we would be able to proceed with a surplus land act process, declaring these properties surplus and then developing an RFP to invite development proposals for the sites in alignment with our action plan and what the council has guided us in the past. So a little description of the sites. These are the vacant lots that currently surround Centennial Plaza. One of them is actually a privately owned lot, but if you see the numbers on the map there, there's a site number 12, 13, and there's a 14, which is actually Centennial Plaza itself, 15, 16, and 17. Each of the lots is about 25 feet wide, about 100 feet deep, right adjacent to the parking lot. And the strange thing is they're kind of shallow lots. Actually, it's quite a big space at the back of the lots that exists between those lots and the actual pathway that's back there. So the lots don't go all the way to the pathway. There's actually a 15-foot wide strip that's actually an old alley easement that's there. Then there's another space before you actually get to the trail. There's a little bit of a closer look and where that alley exists, that 15-foot wide strip. And how it developed is pretty darn close to this and I'll show you some images of that later. We'll take a look at that. Again, this outlines the area that we're looking at for the plan development. The lot in blue there, that's the privately owned one and the rest of those in red, including the plaza itself, are publicly owned. In this recent aerial photo, it shows you how the area has developed, very similar to the plan that was illustrated there. And you can see the alley easement, you can see the parking lot, the pathway, the new bridge. Most of the site is really densely covered in trees. And that's interesting how a lot of these trees have just grown up over the years as volunteers on this site. It's a lot of coast live oaks and a few other trees that were around the old structure on the property. So the origin of the bridge and the plaza, it really began with a downtown revitalization plan that was adopted in 2005. And as part of that plan, the city envisioned these connection points and those connection points being the Lewis Bridge, the pedestrian bridge, Colony Square, and this becoming sort of a center of activity, linking City Hall, the Colony Square, and other retail areas, having some public parking and really having an overall synergy around the downtown. More recently, with our council action plan, we looked at several different methods of really enhancing economic and community vibrancy, fiscal and infrastructure efficiency and sustainability, and really ensuring public safety and providing exceptional services. Now, from that, we looked at a goal of developing land use options for the adopted reuse for these city-owned properties. So what we're doing tonight is really trying to implement that council action plan goal and at the same time, implementing some general plan policies that we've adopted some time ago with our 2002 general plan. And that, one of those is really a policy 4.1, which is really promoting the downtown as our cultural, entertainment, and commercial center and to really concentrate these facilities downtown, having mixed use and pedestrian scale zoning and having some really specific development standards for downtown that really cater to those things. So we've talked about a plan development, but just for, just for a broader explanation, what is a plan development? We call it a PD. And a PD essentially putting over a specific zoning layer on a property to really narrow down what you can do. It can actually add more land uses. It can refine those land uses. It can refine development standards and really hone in a criteria of a specific property so that you know what you're going to be doing with that particular site. So as long as you stay consistent with the general plan, you've got some flexibility to mold your own little sort of zoning district, I'll call it, on a property. And adopt these specific standards and even rein in your land use standards as long as you don't go outside the scope of what the general plan anticipated. So right now on these properties downtown, this is part of our downtown zoning, which allows for retail stores, it allows for food and beverage establishments, entertainment, personal services, allows for offices and residential uses above the ground floor as well. So what we've done and what the Planning Commission has reviewed and recommended is a list of land uses that could be customized for this particular site, very similar to what we already have, but kind of narrowing it in a little bit to really set forth some standards that kind of give us what we're really after for this particular site. So on the ground floor, we'd still expect to see the same sort of thing, a restaurant, essentially, which is artisan foods and products, a bar, eating and drinking place, even a general retail. But instead of being really broad in those general retail uses, we looked at really bringing those down a little closer to not have something like a building materials or hardware store or medical supplies or office supplies, but instead looking to the general plan policy and our council action goals to really have items that contribute to the synergy, the pedestrian orientation that we really want in the downtown, especially so close to City Hall. In addition to that, having something can actually have open operating hours, a business that's actually open to the public, not something that's mail order or by appointment only. So those criteria have been added as well. Now, on the second floor, our downtown zoning does allow for a little more flexibility so that we have things that can kind of contribute to that vibe downtown, such as lodging, maybe a residential unit like we have in La Plaza, maybe an office or personal services. Those things have been added back in as well. But where we gain the most ground with the plan development is really honing in the design of what can be built there, looking how the form of the building can fit a site. And I think we looked at some really random designs a couple of months ago when we first looked at this. And staff has taken your initial direction and we've taken the Planning Commission's direction and looked at how these sites could develop while retaining the views through the site, while retaining the views of City Hall, while respecting the creek setback, while respecting Centennial Plaza. And we've come up with a set of recommended criteria. First off, a 10-foot setback from the back of the sidewalk. That helps give you still a greater sense of visibility through the property. We also said, you know, these sites are so small. Each one is about 25 feet wide combined. You know, the biggest is 75 feet wide by 100 feet deep, still a very tiny site. So if you take it up with parking, you're not going to have much less left at all. So what we're saying is parking really should be off-site, but most land uses that go here shouldn't trigger the need for parking. There's a lot of public parking nearby that can be utilized in City Hall, around Sepulte Gardens, even in the junior high school, even at the library area, for example. Right now in the downtown, the height limit is 45 feet. We're suggesting that here as well. We're going to show you some exhibits of what that looks like compared to other buildings around. We've, we've put together some kind of photo simulations, you might say. Our staff has kind of highlighted how that might look. But also there's a few other ideas about site and building design. And really what, what we expect to see here is a single development on each side of that plaza. The sites are so small, 25 feet wide, it wouldn't make sense to have a little tiny narrow building or something separate. So really combining these parcels or even bridging that plaza space might give us something that's really interesting for this site. And, and architecture that can complement, but not exactly duplicate City Hall is really, is really critical. And then looking at things like recessed building entries, a lot of glass, a lot of transparency and maybe even some encroachments that can encroach out to have outdoor dining in areas that push into the plaza a little bit at ground level or push into the public sidewalk a little bit at ground level. Those are the things that really create kind of an exciting downtown kind of place. A series of other design parameters are in there as well, not having big plumbing features out there like the fire black backflow devices. Making sure that the stormwater provisions don't take up a large chunk of the property. Now, in speaking with our public work staff today about stormwater, I do want to give you a little more information on that. A building that's 5,000 square foot or less really has an extremely minimal stormwater requirement. In fact, they can do most of their stuff below pavers or in a very small area. So it's not a huge In fact, they can do most of their stuff below pavers or in a very small area. So it's not a huge demand. Additionally, we have additional property back here that could be utilized for stormwater, such as the alley that never got constructed. Such as the setback area between potential building site and pathway, some things to think about. Now, a big issue on this property, there is a lot of trees and I'm going to show you an exhibit of where those trees are. Now, the largest trees and the most interesting trees look like they're on the site, but they're actually off the site. At the rear of the site, such as the big D R cedar that's on the property, it's actually adjacent to this property and isn't on these potential sites. Now, one of the action items the council did suggest is. Look at ways that this property could accommodate a restroom that could be used by the public. Could that be attached to a new development? So what we've done is we have actually added it into the plan development that. The development here should incorporate a restroom that's open during business hours. In a location that's accessible from the ground floor, and that is certainly a feasible option. We can talk further about that detail, but let's take a look at the site. Uh, took this picture a couple days ago. And um tried to get the kind of a panoramic of the whole site. You know, what if this site was developed at its maximum potential based on this potential plan development? You would look at something like that. Now that looks a little shocking. I realize that in that particular view, it's not, don't think of it as a as a building design. Think of it as, okay, this is the maximum potential. Something important to note is that in the standards we've provided, it does mandate that. Each floor above the ground floor is reduced by ten percent. So it gives you a little bit of that wedding cake effect. That helps you maintain the views through the property as well as a setback, as well as the fact that the. Rear of these buildings would have to be set about thirty feet back from the path. So it also opens up that corridor a little more. If you were to bridge over the plaza with something, it might look not quite like that, but just. In terms of, you know, the visual um interruption.
I think our architect on the council is cringing right now.
Yes, he probably is. I don't have great drafting tools at my disposal, but and I didn't want to give you a preconceived design, so instead. We're looking at really just light and shadow. But again, that same kind of building form, if it was adjacent to City Hall. Our floor of our decks out here. Um, are at about forty five feet. So right now, the level we're standing at is about forty five feet. Now, if you look outside and you see those railings out there, which are six feet or so up. That height's about fifty three to fifty four feet. So it gives you some perspective. This building's pretty significant. And in fact, a lot of the trees that are around the creek are um almost as tall as this building and a lot taller than forty five feet. And you'll see that when I show you some exhibits later on, but that gives you some perspective as to what forty five feet means. Forty five feet sounds like a lot. Especially when you compare it to some of the single story buildings that are over there now. Um, but it's really a lot less than than some of the existing buildings around town. Now, when we first drew the exhibits for the bridge and we talked about this view access towards City Hall, that was a really big deal. But it's interesting, you know, today, as I walked through from Colony Square. Um, it's different than I think we envisioned it already. You can't see City Hall from any perspective from Colony Square unless you're right back by the Galaxy Theater. Then you see the top of City Hall over the tops of these trees, but a lot of these trees. Are between thirty to forty five feet tall and they're really thick and dense in the creek area. The sick, the big sycamore. So it's kind of interesting. You kind of lose that perspective, but you do have a narrow line of sight through it. And as you walk further. Finally, a glimpse of City Hall comes into play. But from this perspective, you might see a little bit of those buildings, but you're going to be looking over the top of them. Now, the view from the parking lot is another interesting aspect, too. This wouldn't change. So this area we're looking at here is essentially that open area. That includes that alley and it includes that area between the alley and the pathway. It would stay open just like that, and that's where there's some of these other trees. There's a bay laurel in there. There's a sycamore. And just to the left of that picture, outside of this view, outside of these properties is that big D R cedar. Which is that tree right there. So I'm looking kind of straight down that. That undeveloped, I'll call it alley right now in the back of those sites. And just to give you some ideas, I think there were some questions surrounding, you know, if there was an encroachment on this plaza. How how might that be viewed? What would happen here? Now, it's important to know that if there was an encroachment. Each one of those is reviewed on a case by case basis, completely discretionary. And would we want to move these benches? I don't know. Would we want to change things? I don't know. I think what we're trying to say is let's be open and flexible and obviously maintain the look and feel of this plaza as an important gathering space. But essentially, the middle paper section is about eleven feet wide. The um, the plaza itself is a complete lot. It's twenty five feet wide. So it gives you perspective of how narrow these little lots are. I took these photos today, actually. And then this helps you understand the trees that are out there. Number four, recall Stumpy. It really should have come out a long time ago. It's not really much of a live tree. It was a coast live oak, but I would call it more of a coast dead oak. And then there's a few other trees in there that appear to be volunteers. There's some couple of significant ones. Number one really is a pretty significant coast live oak, but it's almost smack dab in the center. And then if I look at um number ten, you can't really see because it's offsite, the cedar. And then nine, eight and nine are also offsite at the back of this photo. They're pretty far back. But for the most part, um, one, two, three, and four, and five. Are kind of in the primary where you might develop something. So you might have to. Work around those or remove some of the trees to really get something on this particular site. The other site on the other side of the plaza doesn't have any of these trees. And the big heritage tree is actually just off the to the side of that site. So looking at an aerial of those, you can see that those trees, the ones that were the larger ones are outside of those lots. Those would all remain in place and we could review any development. Or any proposal. In terms of the other trees on the site. Now, if we were to look at. You know, the maximum potential, again, what might cover these sites if they were developed? This is something like that. Again, it's about twenty five to thirty feet to the path. From the back of any development site, about ten foot to the sidewalk. And then the plaza would remain. And then we obviously ask for articulation and ins and outs on these buildings. So that's kind of a rough scenario if you did a maximum kind of build up. So that brings us to the next next discussion. There is a process that if we do decide to. Move forward and declare these parcels surplus, we would have to go through a surplus land act process, Assembly Bill fourteen eighty six would mandate that. We would first have to offer these properties to developers of affordable housing. Staff has reached out to affordable housing developers. The sites are too small to be conducive because of the low density. And because of the fact that the units would have to be developed above the ground floor and a lack of available parking and access. They're not going to be attractive to that. We still have to go through this process. Um, and if any housing developer wanted to pick up these properties through that process, they would still have to comply with zoning. They would still have to develop a commercial project downstairs, supply the parking. And meet all of the zoning and maximum density requirements. We determined that the density on this property couldn't be more. Than four or five units over the entire site, which doesn't make it conducive enough to really make it. Uh, saleable for that particular purpose. So in summary, the planned development can really help guide and incentivize development that can really help activate the downtown zoning district close to the creek, close to the park and City Hall. Really give us that synergy and presence that I think we've been long seeking around Suncom Gardens. We have mentioned that we do intend to sell these sites to allow for private development. And if if the council does um take action tonight, we can continue down this path. And continue these steps with the surplus land act process and interface. To advertise a site and attract proposals at the sites, and we can still return to council to discuss those features as well. So the action that is being recommended tonight is to introduce that plan development ordinance. Without reading through this, I I do want to leave the opportunity to answer any questions and go back through some of the details of the suggested PD. And I'd be happy to answer any of your questions about uh the properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Uh, this is really an exciting opportunity for us. Uh, the council, uh, several years ago, we made the decision to purchase those lots, seeing them as. Uh, pivotal to really uh making something happen downtown, contributing to the synergy and and helping to revitalize as as it has been going on for years. And what's interesting is we have the opportunity to do something that most residents wish we could do everywhere. Like, we want to see this. We want more of this. And, you know, that's private business that are responsible for that, and that's a good thing. And so this is one of those rare opportunities where we actually own a property and can help to fashion it the way. Not we as the council, but we as really the community want to see, and that's. All the input we've been receiving from all of you over the years and 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 will continue to take in, but that's sort of what's culminating here tonight. Uh, and not dissimilar to what we did with the Creekside Building not that long ago. Uh, when the successor agency owned that and we said, okay, what do we want to see there? And in particular, what do we not want to see there? Not because we don't like those businesses, because they weren't suited to downtown. And so what we're looking at tonight is how do we help to create a a um. A plan development that really, as the director said, lends to the, um, you know, incentivizes the activity that we want to see downtown. So this is a really exciting opportunity and uh good job on all of this, uh, Director. So I'm going to look to my colleagues and see uh who might have questions of staff. Mayor Pro Tim Newsome.
Thank you. Phil, as we're um looking at this a little bit more, can you put the colored uh map layout? That was pretty nice. Wasn't in our handout, but it gave us some idea and a visual to keep going. It's the multicolored. Is early on. No, go back one more. There we go. Thank you. Um, it was kind of nice to see how far we've come on this as what we originally intended with the down. Two thousand and five downtown revitalization plan. So thank you for keeping that up so I can look at it a little longer.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Funk. Uh, thank you. And I share the mayor's excitement about this, uh, that you and do have a few questions. Uh, first of all, uh, the minimum hours of operation, uh, four days a week, six hours a day and open until seven P M. Um, that seems relatively light as a requirement, as an expectation. Uh, even if you're looking at a dinner only, dinner only restaurant, you would still want to be open more than four days a week. Any particular reason that 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 standard was selected?
That was selected as a bare minimum. So the thought is and the hope is we get someone that's open more, but we wanted to create a bare minimum standard. A lot of our businesses in downtown right now are really only open Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So that was kind of the thinking, or a lot of businesses that are closed Monday, Tuesday. Um, some, some, some of them even Wednesday, and I felt if. If we ask for too much, are we going to be able to attract someone to do something on these properties? But I think it's completely at the council's pleasure to modify that, to make that a little more uh. Increase those hours, certainly. All right, but our original thinking was looking at the model that's really working now and some of the more successful businesses.
Um, and did you have any feedback from potential bidders on the site about that, the hours of operation?
Nobody has weighed in on that particular topic at this point.
Okay. Um, is the alley area still needed as an easement?
Actually, it goes right through some existing buildings along the back, so. It's likely it's not needed. We have the pathway already and it's being used to its full extent. And the pathway is actually outside of the alley easement. It's so it doesn't appear to be necessary. It's potential that we could look at abandoning a portion of that. That's something we can look at the streets and highways code for, uh, could be used for other purposes. We could allow encroachments on it. We could allow stormwater on it. We could allow outdoor dining on it and still maintain as an alley and still allow those encroachments. So it's flexible in terms of its use. But at this point in time, I don't think we'd be able to build on it, in other words, with structures.
Okay, so is there, if we wanted to allow some flexibility, like for instance, I know we abandoned um an easement. Uh, to in order to create the La Plaza area. Um, abandoned a a streetway easement that used to run where the freeway is now. Um, if we wanted to allow any flexibility in that alley space. Um, on either side of the pathway, one with trees, the one without trees in that area. Um, would we need to make any changes tonight in the planned overlay, a development overlay?
No, no, we could simply allow things to happen there through an encroachment process. Or we could, or you could give us direction to say, hey, explore abandoning that. Um, as another item, but doesn't have to be in the planned development, which really sets forth development standards and things. So if we wanted to do that separately, we can still proceed with the PD as it's written tonight.
Okay, so it could be offered to someone if someone had a a an idea, a really great idea that could only work if. The if the city abandoned that alley easement, that's something that could be considered.
An option, absolutely.
Okay. I have no idea how useful that might be, but it's worth asking those questions. Um, and your, your lovely little uh drawings, which thank you very much. It does. I really appreciate the opportunity to understand how something might physically occupy the space involved. Um, some of us might be more gifted in understanding that, some of us less so, and I appreciate that. You know, you're going that extra mile for us. Um, the uh, I noted that you had rooftops on there, but I did want to confirm that. One of the options that we're offering is is at that forty five foot level. That could be a roof that. Um, it was, the note is here on page thirty four, use of roof roof permitted for occupancy. Um, that's would be like a rooftop bar or something of that sort. As in, you know, an air, an area or walking, but not that you're going to live up there.
Correct. So an area that you could be there, you could occupy it. Or there's other features such as an elevator tower that extend into it, could be a railing, there could be other architectural features that add to the building. Kind of like what we have on these outdoor areas of this building, but not that it's an internal story above that height.
Okay. And um, did I, do I understand that the the benches could stay or or some of them might be removed if. If outdoor dining were going to be used in that particular area?
So if we did get a restaurant and we're successful with that, which we're hopeful that happens in the future. And they did want to encroach on the plaza, they'd have to come into our city to ask for that encroachment permit. And at that time, we'd consider whether we could move relocate um one of those benches at that particular time. There's no proposal to do that now. Certainly, it's an option. And the council could write some standards into this PD if they felt. That we didn't want to do that, or they could just provide direction to staff as we move forward with encroachments. In the far future that, you know, how we treat that situation, but we have to look at. I suppose it's an exchange, you know, if we had a restaurant that had some outdoor seating and dining there, it might be to our advantage. To let go of one of the benches, for example.
Sure, but it wouldn't require us to let go of all of them.
No, I I don't see that being the case. I think that there's quite a bit of space there, and so we would assume that would be one to two.
Okay.
Or they could even be relocated and squeezed a little closer in as long as we have a nice big. Plaza area that's still maintained for access, but you do want to have a little bit of flexibility. If you get one restaurant, you get another land use and you've got a little bit of. Interesting things going on there, so.
Absolutely. So let's visualize that uh as we just described with table that space. On say the the eastern side of the thing. Um, as you know, full of tables, full of of happy outdoor diners there in that space. I want to hear from Chief Masterson, if we're going to be able to, if that area is full, are we going to be able to have the sightlines that we need to have? Uh, for for police monitoring of the area now that we have the opportunity to have cameras about on the backside as well.
Uh, yes, I believe we do, and and even if you look at the diagrams that Phil provided. Uh, we still have a shadow sightline, uh, for lack of better terms, as we drive by, we can still see what's going on in the alleyway. Or the walkway just by the backlighting, so i- it's not a concern for us at this time that we would lose sight.
Great, thank you. Uh, that'll take care of me for now. Thank you, Phil.
Councilmember Borba.
Yes, thank you. I have several questions. Um, in in the report, you mentioned, and it was in your briefing about not having. Yes, thank you. I have several questions. Um, in, in the report, you mentioned, and it was in your briefing about not having stormwater or above ground stormwater retention may be allowed on site. But Region Water Quality Control Board, if I recall correctly, didn't want us to like allow downtown stormwater storage and, you know, we're going to build a tank in undersunk and gardens so that individual business owners wouldn't have to provide that. But they require new construction to have, you know, I thought onsite stormwater retention. So how does, how do you reconcile that?
It's based on building size and the size of impervious surface. So below 5,000 square foot and below, your requirements are extremely minimal. And they can be handled in a very small area that's got pavers on it. For example, we could say, hey, we're going to keep this plaza. We're going to dig up those center pavers. We're going to make them permeable and that's going to be your offset. That's just one example. Or we could say, hey, in a portion of the area between the pathway and the rear, we're going to do a 25 foot wide strip. That's one foot lower. It's going to be landscape with grasses and that's going to be your area. That's how small our stormwater requirement would be on these particular sites. Now, we did adopt a stormwater management plan for all of downtown. We just didn't finalize it yet. Regional Water actually even approved it. But we had to demonstrate that we had projects that would implement sort of the larger regionals range of our downtown. We didn't have those projects lined up yet. We will one day. In fact, our downtown infrastructure plan will include some of those features. And we'll be able to get there and hopefully relieve these independent downtown properties of having to do that on site because the properties are so small, it does become challenging. But again, with a smaller building, the requirements are very, very small. It's different than you have something like the size of La Plaza. We've got a big impervious surface, got a much bigger requirement.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, good to hear. Um, because these lots are 25 by 50 feet? Is that what they are? Or are they 25 by 100?
They're just 25 by 100.
So you add them up, they're, that's more than 5,000.
Sure. So 50 by 100 be 5,000. So looking at the larger side of this property, which is about 75 by 100, and then you include the setbacks and the development forms, you're probably going to cover about 6,000 or 7,000 square feet um, at the most. But even with that, the amount of stormwater mitigation is still very small.
Cool. Okay. And so, um, so there's three lots on one side of the plaza, two lots on the other side of the plaza. How would this process work in the sense of, you know, we go through the Surplus Land Act? And okay, nobody wants to build affordable housing here because it's not viable for that purpose, let's say. We, are we offering, going to look for proposals, um, for, uh, you know, the three lots on one side, the two lots on the other side? A, a proposal for the entire thing in case somebody wants to build over the plaza, which your plan envisions allowing? How are we going to procedurally go through obtaining proposals? Because ultimately, we're going to sell these properties to private party to develop, right? But how are we, you know, it's like I'm selling this or that, or maybe all of it. How do we, how are we procedurally going to approach that?
So we would put out the entire, uh, package, 13, 14, 15, 16, actually not the plaza itself, but 13, 15, 16, and 17 is available for development and see what proposals we get forward and be able to select the most promising, whether it includes all of them or whether it includes one side and, and the other side separately. The idea is that 15, 16, and 17, we would merge the underlying property line before conveyance so that that becomes one site. And we'd hope that we at least get one development on that side and at least one on the other. For that, somebody gets the entire thing. So it's either way. It's based on the proposals that we get. We'll see where the demand is.
Okay. And if, um, you know, somebody's interested in 13, but their project would require the involvement of 12, which is privately owned, um, how would you perceive that, um, proceeding?
They really rely on each other. So if someone does that, they're going to have to acquire 12, or the owner of 12 is going to have to acquire 13, or the owner of 12 is going to have to go after all of them. So that is really what we expect to happen. It could go either way, but we know that it's unrealistic to envision something to happen on 12 without including 13 or vice versa.
Got it. Okay. And thank you for having this mapped up. It clarifies in my mind a statement you made, which is the alley right of way is not where the sidewalk is. And it actually looks like it runs through the back of Dr. Penn.
It does.
Gotcha. But the alleyway being a public right of way, as, as Councilmember Funk, I think, asked about, could be potentially abandoned and made a part of this project, whether it be for stormwater drainage or some other outside dining or what have you, could be made usable for only any number of things?
Yes, it could. It could be made useful in two different ways, by abandonment or by simply leaving it in place and allowing encroachment.
Got it. Beautiful. Okay. Thank you. And then on the comment regarding public restrooms, I know we did have some discussion on that regarding the desire ability of having some, uh, access to public restroom. My concern is we, under this provision, we would effectively be mandating a business to open their restrooms to the general public. Whereas typically businesses, um, may in practice allow that, but they probably have a sign that says for customers only. And I don't think it's any, I think we're all well aware that currently there's a fair amount of transient activity in, in this vicinity. And I'm concerned about us imposing a requirement on a business to have its bathrooms open to the general public, uh, inside their business, um, which would require people entering and walking through their business. Um, we don't require anything like that anywhere else in the city, right?
We do not. This is unique. And that's the way it's written now. And it's at the council's pleasure to modify that language any way you wish at this particular point.
I mean, and it's unique in the sense that we're the ones selling the property so we can attach that kind of condition.
Attach that. We have that opportunity, or we have the opportunity to have it something else, such as to the customers only.
Right.
So, or, or from the inside, you know, or a certain hour, you can do whatever you want on that. But certainly it is, it is a big, well, it's a significant topic because it may, it may discourage some investors from this site.
Right. Um, because I, I mean, I could, I wonder if you could condition, uh, particularly, you know, since we're selling the property, say, during public events, you know, i.e. Colony Days or whatever, all the events Terry has in the Sunken Gardens vicinity is that during public events, you have to have your bathroom open to the public or something like that, but not all the time your door is open that you have to allow it.
It's, it's possible. I mean, during public events, we have 30 other restrooms down there usually. So it would not make much of a dent in that, but certainly any of those things are options for the council.
Okay. So I'm curious about that. Um, and, uh, I think that might be it for, for the moment. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Just have a couple of comments and a couple of questions. Um, first on the, your.
Let's stick with questions and then comments will come later.
Well, the questions kind of lead into comments, but, or the comments. Okay, I'll skip on that. The width of the alleyway, what is the width of the alleyway? It's going to follow up on some of the questions that.
25 feet.
So that alleyway.
Oh, I'm sorry. 15 feet, the alley. I was thinking of the Santiano Plaza lot.
Okay. So that, it would still be a fair addition to the lot. I mean, 15 feet, you can do quite a bit with, if we were, if somebody needed to add to that, I mean, that'd be great. The, the, with this being for the, uh, what do they call it? The, the Surplus Land Act and the, the lot needing to be used for the low income housing on the upper floor, you said that it, it's been deemed already to not be viable for that? Is that?
For the most part, yes. We, I have actually contacted two different affordable housing groups. And they would not be interested in, in a parcel of this size with that zoning.
Okay. And what is, what is the criteria to determine whether or not it's viable? That is.
Number, number of units is really the key. And so they need to get 20, 30, 40, 50, 100 units to be a viable, affordable housing project. And they need to get the parking and, and they need to get the access and need to have it a ground floor project.
It would, oh, it would need to be a ground floor. Well, I know, because well, within minimum number of units, it would, would it require an elevator for, um?
More than four.
For more than four. I knew there was a number, I couldn't remember what it was. But then, yeah, parking would be a serious challenge because it's like, you don't have a lot of space to work with.
So all of those things really point towards the fact that it's just not going to be suitable for that.
That, that makes sense. Um, and then to follow up on the stormwater. So my understanding, what, the way you explained it is that for the water, stormwater retention, the surface that could be used to mitigate that, it can't, it'll, it could be like a flat landscape area. It doesn't have to be a swale or, you know.
It would have to be graded so that water goes to it. So it couldn't.
Right. But it doesn't have to be like, like an obvious depression where water is going to collect and puddle and be, you know, two feet deep or something.
The depth, the depth in the area is going to depend on the amount of impervious surface that's created. But, um, I mean, a similar example is our parking lot directly adjacent to this site has stormwater built into it in the landscape areas because the landscape is just slightly lower than the asphalt parking surface and the curbs are cut to allow the water to flow into it.
So, yeah, because on the point I'm getting at, it's not going to be like an obvious retention basin.
No, not for development. For a development of this size, you wouldn't recognize it.
Okay. That, that's what I was getting at. So, you know, if it gets landscaped and if it's turf or whatever, then it just becomes part of the, the structure. And I think that's great. On the encroachment permit for seating on the outside, I think that that's a great idea. Obviously, if that ever comes up, you know, I imagine like if the sidewalk in front of, uh, streetside was say a 12 foot wide sidewalk, that'd be a great place to have an encroachment for, you know, six feet or something, or whatever it would take to put a couple of seats out there. You know, so something like this, I think, would work. It would be great. This is a great thing on that. And then I will get my, I'm going to whip my comment in there. So your attempted architecture, don't worry about it.
I need to hire an architect for that.
Don't go ahead and comment.
But what I was going to say was, is, you know, you see, you seem to anticipate that there was going to be, oh, shock because it was so big and it was really enclosed an area. And when I saw that, you know, as crude as it may be, I, I like it. I think that having even 45 feet tall, I think it's going to create a real coziness to this. So I, I think that, you know, we're definitely on the right track with, um, with allowing something even at that height and built in like that. You know, you're going from a flat ground, nothing there. Something like that, of course, can seem kind of shocking, but I think it's, um, I think it's going to be great to see something like that built up even to that size. So, you know, thanks for your work on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, certainly my questions regarding the easement and stormwater have been completely satisfied. So we're good there. I, I was thinking about, uh, Councilmember Borbo's question regarding restrooms. I guess the way I envisioned it would be, you know, much more upscale, mind you, uh, but you know how you might go to a service station and they have a restroom on the outside of the building and there might be a key, you know, something like that, that they get from the business or from somewhere. And I imagine that could possibly be, I mean, there, there are probably many options for how that could operate. Do you, have you seen that in different, different places? What, what other options there might be?
Certainly. I, I, I tend to see much more of the restroom being on the inside that's visible from the staff that's working behind the counter. Because then it can be much better managed and cleaned. Uh, when there's a doorway on the outside of a building, similar to a service station, it is much more difficult to monitor and clean and manage that for the staff. Um, but it certainly could work in, in both different ways. This is a very high activity area, so we have to take that into consideration as to what's going to be the safest, what's going to be um, the most accessible for folks and what can be the most easily monitored and, and cleaned and regulated.
Okay. And I think we can talk about this more during deliberation. Uh, Councilmember Funk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I missed one of my notes here going through. Uh, and that's with regard to the transient lodging. Uh, do you understand that if we, for residential use, we wouldn't, they would, would have to establish parking offsite? But do I understand that if this were used for a, an Airbnb or sort of thing, that they would not be required to make any arrangement for parking? And therefore the res, the occupants of the space would be using city parking and, you know, in the lot next door or, or street parking?
Yes, that's the way it's written now.
So we would essentially be subsidizing that usage?
Yes.
With providing parking.
Yes, that's the proposal now. Because we, I think, determined that the number of units that could be there for transient lodging is so small. And their parking would primarily be overnight. Most people that do lodging, they are just there for the night. Whereas if you're living there, sometimes you might be there all day and all night with a vehicle. But if you're a hotel gas, it's typically just at night. That's what we mostly see. And that the number of vehicles for any number of units here might only be four. And given the amount of public parking available and the options, we figured that would be less of an impact than with the residential.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Uh, thank you. I have some follow on questions on that. Um, when we talked about the number of units and you mentioned that, you know, building, it wouldn't be very attractive for an affordable housing developer because it wouldn't be able to get very many units in there. Do you, are you have any concern that the same would be true of somebody building market rate housing? Uh, I'm, because I'm assuming the number of units isn't going to be magically different, uh, whether it's, uh, market rate housing on the top two floors or whether it's affordable housing?
It's different, I think, with market rate housing because you can have really high end housing and have it penciled for the property. You could do something where you're going to be having, you know, a $4,000 a month lease.
Right.
Um, and that's going to pencil, and that's going to make it worthwhile if you have four units of that nature.
So you, you might be talking four residential units either way, two on each floor, two on the second floor, two on the third floor. And then, and if you were going to, you know, if it was going to be like a bed and breakfast type of thing, you know, a small boutiquey hotel type of thing, you might get maybe six units or something, but you wouldn't get.
Roughly about the number.
Yeah, you wouldn't get a lot of units, uh, either way then. Okay. And then, um, in regards to the, the trees, you mentioned in the report, and you mentioned verbally that there's, uh, you know, there's a fair number of trees there, but there's, none of them are heritage trees. Uh, there's, so there's kind of a blank slate in the sense that somebody proposing something, if any given one of those trees, they could take out and, you know, plant new ones or whatever, if, if they, they could take out any of them that they needed to in order to build the structure uh, that needed to be built, right?
Their request to take them out would have to be part of their proposal and they have to ask for that permission. But certainly there, none of them are heritage trees. And they all appear to be like against volunteer trees that
Right.
may have grown up on their own.
So there's nothing inherent there that would impede a particularly creative or innovative plan?
Yeah.
Okay. And then regarding that kind of flexibility, uh, you, you know, you've written in here, and I think as the mayor noted in particular, things we don't want to see in this area. Uh, and you've written some standards and uh, you know, things we'd like to see and how we'd like to see it done. But somebody comes forward with a grandiose idea that uh, has some different things that could all be considered, right? And we would just consider granting waivers or exceptions to, uh, a creative plan is.
For a different design or a different land use?
For a different design. I don't mean a different land use. I mean for.
Certainly. Yeah. I think, I think the way the standards are now, it leaves it pretty wide open. Um, or they could give us a proposal and we could evaluate how that fits.
Right. Because I mean, the concern, of course, is that regardless of what we um, would like to see, it's got to be commercially viable or, you know, everybody's going to propose it. So, um, it is just about what we want. It's about what can be done. Yes. So, all right. Thank you.
We are nothing if not flexible. All right. Before we go to, um, actually, I'm going to take a break before we go to the public. Any other questions of staff? All right. See, and then let's go ahead and take a break. I see 7:49. Uh, why don't we come back at eight on the dot and then I will go right into public comment? Talking about the planned development for some, uh, the lots surrounding Centennial Plaza and we are going to go ahead and open up to public comment. And so we've got a member of the public here ready to speak. And then also, if you're on the webinar, you can raise your hand. Uh, and if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. Uh, so with that, uh, welcome to our member of the public in the chambers.
Thank you. Jeff Osland, once again, I think this is fantastic for the downtown if it's done correctly. There's a few things that, uh, I'd like to address. One would be, um, I'm thrilled that we have flexibility to do some nice mixed-use projects that could accommodate great businesses and maybe some dining. Uh, the alleyway is an interesting phenomenon, I guess, in the downtown, the way that is. So technically, I guess, without messing up the easement too bad, you could build the second story over the top of the alleyway that would provide covered dining, possibly or something of that nature, if we put that into a thought process. The minimum hours, I think it's great that we're establishing minimum hours. Let's face it, no successful business is going to operate 25 hours a week and succeed. They're going to have to be there a lot more. But having some minimum hours, I think is a, is a great caveat to the land use. Uh, 13 through 17, the next question would be that technical pathway. Could somebody build a second story over it and cover it? Just a question mark. As far as for bathrooms go, I believe the Kramerian slow is a good example of a used project that's kind of small where they do have community bathrooms back there, if I'm not mistaken. And those bathrooms are only open during the business hours of the businesses. And that might be a great way to compromise this. And then there, your individual businesses, I'm sure have some private access to a bathroom that is not just the public's bathroom. As far as, uh, the parking that was brought up and it being possibly depending on what would go in and utilizing the city's parking, if it was a transient occupancy, a high-end hotel or something that's not really a high-end apartment or an Airbnb that folks stayed at, maybe you added a $10 a night fee to recover your free parking back for allowing them to have a parking spot in our city parking. Those are just some thoughts that I had as you guys were deliberating back and forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Osland. I will look to the webinar and we do have another member of the public, of course, here in the chambers, who are more than welcome to come speak. Uh, if you're in the webinar, go ahead and raise your hand using that little icon down at the bottom of the screen. And if you're on the phone, please press star nine. There is no need to wait. Raise your hand now. Do I am looking at attendees. I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand. So I'm going to give it another second here, just in case you can't, like, you're like, I've fallen and I can't reach the raise hand icon. No, okay. Uh, is there anyone on the phone, Luke? No, okay. And I'll look again to members of the public here and seeing none wishing to speak. All right, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Um, and that may speak to the fact that we've done a lot of outreach on this and, and we're pretty clear on what all of you want, uh, to see here in the downtown and the synergy that you want to create. So I'm hoping that's, uh, that's an indication of it. So, uh, let's see, some of the things that we've talked about, um, you know, I get the sense we're kind of all uh, in, in alignment here and wanting to move forward. The thing I'm hearing us maybe needing to discuss is the bathroom, uh, potentially. And Mr. Osland did ask about, you know, potential, say, covered dining going over the alleyway or a potential second story. I think the second story, the issue would be you've got to set back 10% from the ground floor. And so you couldn't have like the second floor going out further with a, with a covering, but, um, potential dining covered in that alleyway if we were to do an easement or, I mean, sorry, an encroachment permit. I'm assuming that that would be allowed.
You could do something like that. And in fact, even though you have to be 10% less on each floor, you could make up that 10% on another side of the building. So it could actually overhang in portions as long as it's recessed in other portions to make up for that. So it actually provides for quite a bit of flexibility in that design. And an encroachment could also do something.
And I think you really hit it there. And we've said this word several times is the flexibility. And so tonight, we're wanting to come with these parameters of here's what we want to see, here's what we want to make happen. And we want to give you staff the flexibility to be working with a potential, you know, owner developer of how he or she may put this together. Uh, so whether it has, it's an encroachment or abandonment at some point, whether we're going into Centennial Plaza with some dining, all of that, we wanted to say all of that is on the table and we want to have that flexibility as you move forward. With regards to the restrooms, um, this is a conversation we had back initially and I know it is, um, it is a tough one. As Councilmember Borbo said, we're, uh, you know, potentially asking a private business, hey, let everybody, anybody who wants to, uh, come use your restroom. And at the same time, we have a lot of people downtown who might be there when City Hall isn't open, which, you know, Monday through Friday, we have downtown restrooms at City Hall, so anybody can come use those. Uh, but we have the situation that particularly on the weekends when we're not having an event with a bunch of, of porta-potties around that, you know, businesses, unless you're using their business, they're typically not going to um, want people coming in and using the restroom. And so we're wanting to be able to provide that as we have more and more activity downtown. And then, of course, on the other side, you do have, you know, sometimes some unsavory activities that can go on and you don't want to create an environment where that may be more likely to happen. And then having a business, you know, needing to manage that and deal with the ramifications. So these are the kind of things that we're wrestling with right now and, uh, like to see where my, what my colleagues are, are thinking on this at, at the moment. And, and keeping in mind, again, we want to be flexible. Um, Mr. Osland mentioned some, uh, place in San Luis and I've been to one of the places where there's a public restroom where you kind of go downstairs and any members of the public can use that. Um, there's got to be probably some ideas of how that can work, but we might not solve that tonight. Well, I guarantee you we won't solve that tonight. Councilmember Borbo.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so I have a, a sort of a related question. Um, in regards to flexibility and in regards to the bathroom, but in terms of us identifying, as the mayor earlier indicated, things we don't, the kind of uses we don't want down here, like hardware stores or what have you. Uh, and, but we've identified the things we really would like to see, which is dining opportunities. But on the second and third floor, that from a city's perspective, having transient occupancy that is hotel, you know, like, uh, bed and breakfast or high-end, uh, nice units on the second and third floor. If that's something that we would be desirous of, then, you know, are there things we can do to incentivize that in terms of accepting proposals? And I don't mean to get into weeds, I just mean conceptually, are there things we can do to incentivize that? And could we also, in the sense, be flexible with, uh, you know, how bathroom access might be conducted, the mayor's thinking, are, are there other ways to do this? But that we'd be open to, you know, if some proposer has a great idea, or maybe we give him some brownie points or something for, for some degree of access or something. Is there any flexibility that we could offer? And I don't mean to get down to weeds and be real specific, but are there things we could do? Or if we want to encourage a certain activity like a, a bed and breakfast, is there anything we can offer? In the sense that if, you know, if you do this, the price is X and if, but if you're just doing something else, the price is Y.
Certainly those provisions could be added and it's possible they may not have to be added to the PD, but it could be something that council advises that with any negotiation, we consider the following factors.
So we could just say, we're going to consider these things in evaluating a proposal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, um, with regard to that, I'm not sure, I mean, I, I have why, why we would want to actively subsidize or encourage transient occupancy of that, um, of that space. of that, of that space. Now, I recognize that, you know, having customers around is, you know, there's value in that. But we have opportunities with the Carlton right there. And, you know, it, it's, it's not a difficult place. And, you know, we've got a couple hotels already, another one that's on the drawing books. And I think that, and I don't see a particular advantage to subsidizing that use. It was, I was actually concerned that, that we would be implicitly subsidizing them by not requiring them parking. Where, because, you know, the bigger problem we're dealing with is that we have commercial space that's getting eaten up by residential uses and residential uses, they're getting eaten up by short-term rentals. And that whole trending is damaging to the, you know, family-oriented, resident-oriented nature of our community. So I, I would not be keen on, on, on trying to incentivize that unless somebody can give, give us a good argument why that's, that's really key. With regard to restrooms, as the mayor had brought up, um, yeah, I mean, we, I spent my whole life growing up going to service station restrooms and where you always had those, that availability on the outside. And some of them work cleaner than others. But I do think that we can require that or at minimum strongly favor proposals that accommodate a public restroom that could be, you know, that would not be limited to just customers only. Because it's a basic hospitality issue. If you're walking around town with an elderly parent, and any, you know, older gentleman or, you know, a toddler, it is really helpful to have a place where there is, where you can take care of those necessities and not worry about whether or not you have change in your pocket to pay for something at the, at the business. So I would, I would be in favor of either keeping the current requirement or at minimum strongly encouraging that in the proposal.
Thank you. Other council member comments, deliberations by Councilmember Borbo, followed by Mayor Protem Newsom.
Yeah, thank you, because I didn't want to respond to the concern expressed by Councilmember Funk. I think that there is good logic for encouraging a transient occupancy use. A, there's transient occupancy tax, which is generated, but also those folks who would stay in a thing like that would almost certainly be going out to eat dinner, which is something we want to encourage versus, you know, residents that would live there would help bring life to downtown, but would not be going out to dinner every night. And, I mean, so these are two things we try to encourage. And while, yes, there are other, you know, hotel opportunities in the downtown area. You know, th- this would be more of a niche type of opportunity and that I think could be very attractive to folks. And as far as, you know, we then inherently subsidize in parking, which would be the case if we kind of gave them a couple of parking spots in the city parking lot. We wouldn't have to give them to them. But, I mean, it's certainly not unusual for cities to, to subsidize through reduced cost activity that it wants to see occur, just as we don't require parking in the downtown area for any particular business. You know, because we're trying to encourage businesses to locate in the downtown and encourage people to come. And we have over a thousand spots in the downtown area. So, I mean, I think there's very much a case to be made for encouraging a transient occupancy. So anyway, but I'm, but I'm glad you brought it up as a concern. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem Newsom.
Thank you. I too would like to see more of an active downtown restaurants on the lower level, maybe some short-term rentals on the upper level for those that are looking for more active downtown experience. Public access to restrooms, I think it's going to be important. We've had some of the community and other business owners downtown wanting public restrooms. I think if we got a good proposal on existing access and a shared during business operations, I think that would work in tandem. There's some areas in some of the smaller communities that seem to just use public restrooms for multiple businesses. So maybe it's something where there's a couple different businesses that are going to sure, one or two bathroom accesses alleviate some of the, the need for it downtown. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Deras.
Thank you. Yeah, on the restroom issue, I'm sitting here listening to the comments and thinking about all different possibilities for something like this. And I'm not comfortable with the business owner, obviously, having that open, having to be required to do that. You know, I think it needs to be outlined maybe pretty clearly is when, something like, when is the need for two more restrooms on, on a, open on a regular basis? When we have an event, we have restrooms brought in during normal business hours. I know City Hall is, is open, I believe, for the restrooms there. Is it a viable thing or is it necessary to have more public restrooms that are, you know, in this manner? And if so, is it possible to be co-maintained, if it's going to be for the public, by the city and the owner of whatever establishment is built? I don't know if that's possible, but I see it being a burden possibly to a business owner having a restroom like that. I know they're, they're necessary, but like I said, when we have events downtown, at Sun Gardens, we usually bring restrooms in and it's, I don't think it's an issue. Anyway, that's my comment on that. Thanks.
So a couple of things I'll say, first, addressing the restrooms. Restrooms are something that the city does not have the capacity, funding-wise and personnel-wise, to, to build and maintain in our downtown. And so right now, we can say, well, City Hall is open Monday through Friday. So, you know, majority of the time you have access. But weekends ideally is probably where there's a little more activity, you don't. Then you're needing to go to the individual business owners. So part of the idea with this PD is we're able to attract the kind of businesses we want and to potentially bring in, to have a need met in the downtown that is only going to increase as the years go by and have it brought into this PD. And it could be something that, you know, we're needing to incentivize because they are providing that. So I, I see there's going to be give and take in whatever scenario we come up with and whatever negotiations happen. But I think it is important that we look at that as a possibility. I don't want to say that it's, I'm not willing to sit here today and say it's a, it's a deal breaker because there could be something amazing and we say, you know, all right, that's fine. We don't need that. But I'm, but I'm hard pressed to imagine what that is right now. So even if we're talking, you know, one or two little spots for people to use on a regular basis and figuring out how, you know, to the extent we can, we can help, you know, with the ideas to figure out how that can work, I think that is going to be very important to our downtown as we grow. I don't want to be short-sighted on that. Secondly, I do agree with Councilmember Borbo on the, the TOT upstairs. If I look at the, the second use, the second story uses that are available, in addition to all the ground floor uses, we have things like business support services, a live-work unit, multifamily dwelling, personal services and offices, in addition to lodging. Out of all of those, I would prefer lodging. So, you know, if I look at what is the benefit to the city, to the synergy downtown, into the businesses downtown, it would be lodging over any of those others. So obviously, if you know, the first story uses go up to the second story, all the better. But I think lodging is our, is our best bet on that second floor. So I want to propose that we move forward with, with the PD as is. I'm not sensing that there's any changes that need to be made. I know we've got some hesitancy with restrooms, but I would ask my colleagues that are a little on that side, would you be willing to, to keep that in there and see what sort of negotiation we can have with any potential property owners?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think as long as it's, you know, it's going to be discussed and there's, it's going to get worked out. I do realize that there's a need at certain times, as you mentioned, weekends and, and other times in the city halls closed. So, yeah, I don't want to close it on that completely, certainly keep it open and part of a negotiation tool.
I was going to propose, you know, that we remove that particular language, but include that, you know, something that any request or any proposal would, you know, need to address how public access to bathrooms could be increased or what have you. So that, you know, that it's definitely an item of discussion for anybody making a proposal. Because having public bathroom access is clearly a public good that, you know, we'd like to see increased. I'm just very leery about putting it into writing that, that it's something we're going to impose on a business, recognizing what I think you're saying is, well, we have the flexibility to change it later. I would just kind of look at it, you know, in reverse, saying, well, we're going to talk about it. We have, we could have the ability to put it back in later. So I'm, you know, I mean, if, if that's, if everybody else is the other direction, but I would make the, the plea that we remove it and it be a clear item of discussion for anybody making a proposal.
I think my concern is when we remove it, it's very hard to put in. It's easier to remove it on the back end if we need to, but to try to put it in there when it's not there already. Because, you know, in any negotiation, you're trying to, you know, get more of what you want, which would be the same for the city and the same for developers. So if in the end, we're saying, hey, we want to add this thing of a bathroom, they'd be like, what? So I think we should keep it in there. And I think between staff and whoever comes forward, we're going to come up with a, with a really good solution for our entire community.
I don't agree, but it won't be enough to make me vote no, so.
Well, then I would look to my council members if someone would make a motion.
So just, sorry, our city clerk was just reminding me just on the topic of restrooms, that it is an ordinance that you're voting on, so that would be in the ordinance. It is, it would have to take a change to that ordinance to remove that provision. But just wanted to make sure that we're all on board with that.
I think we're all on board. And what we're saying is there can be flexibility with it. We're not saying a business has to have people tracing through their business if that's not what they want. They can figure out a way to provide public restrooms. We're not saying you have to have one per so many visitors. We're just saying public restrooms in whatever way that looks, and we will figure that out. Yes?
Well, but you're saying, so you're saying it's in, it's in the ordinance. The plan development overlay is an ordinance. So if we, you know, somebody came forward with a proposal and said, well, we want to comply with that requirement only on the weekends when City Hall is closed or something like that, what would we have to do to accommodate a change in that? You know, since it's written into the language of an ordinance?
So I think that, if I could just jump in, I think that would be covered in the master plan of development that would be required. So the language will sit, which is just what we wanted to make sure that, that this was clear, that this was going into our municipal code. And so it's not a negotiation so much as someone saying, well, I don't want to provide public restrooms. So by putting this into our municipal code, if we wanted to get rid of that, we would have to do an amendment and revise our municipal code. Because by doing this by ordinance, this isn't, this PD overlay goes into our municipal code. So we'd have to do a municipal code amendment if for some reason we wanted to get rid of the requirement for public restrooms. So that's just what we wanted to make sure, but it's just.
If, if I could, I think what Councilmember Borbo is saying is what if a business said, hey, we're willing to do that Saturday and Sunday when City Hall is closed, but we don't want to do it Monday through Friday. What we're saying here is shall be open to the public during open business hours and location accessible, that would not be an option. We'd have to come back and change the ordinance.
Right, because you have, in, in this language here that you're putting into the municipal code is what you are saying is the PD overlay zone. So if you want to do out, something outside of the PD overlay zone, you have to go through the process to change the PD overlay zone. Okay.
So given that, and we talked about flexibility, and you gave an example in, in response to the question Mr. Osland asked about, gee, could you have a second story overhang? And you said, well, yeah, but you'd have to maybe shrink the building more on the second story on another side of the building or something. But if, let's say, somebody came up with a plan, said, well, but I really want to do this. And, and we talked about flexibility, are, is it likely that when somebody comes forward with a plan and we're interested in it, and they, and with you, they work up a master plan of development, is it likely that for one reason or another, whether it's bathrooms or roof lines or something else, is it likely that we're going to revisit the wording of this PD overlay anyway?
We hope not. We hope that there's enough flexibility built into it and that master plan of development can, you know, can, can fit within these particular parameters. And we feel like these parameters are quite, quite flexible. But the way the public restroom is one's written, you know, maybe if, if something, something was left out, maybe it said, public restroom shall be provided to the public in a location that's accessible from the ground floor. And then we could be flexible on the hours of that particular restroom. Maybe that's something you're looking for, just to throw out.
By itself, that implies it'd be open all the time. So I wouldn't, I don't think that'd be a good alternative. I'm just concerned about we're, we're taking away flexibility.
But it doesn't actually say it would be open all the time. So, I mean, if I, if I look to our city clerk, if we were to take out during open business hours and just said, open to the public in a location that is accessible from the ground floor, does that accommodate the flexibility that we're talking about, particularly that Councilmember Borbo is bringing up?
Yes, because that will give you the, there needs to be public restrooms, but you're not built, you're not stuck to a certain timeframe, which then is something that can be negotiated as part of the master plan of development. So you, you have more of that flexibility to sort of negotiate something further down the line that locks it in, but not that locks it in at this.
Okay. Do we have consensus to move that?
Well, I kind of want to comment on that because I'm, the way I would read that if it said, you know, you've got restroom shall be open to the public, period. Then that tells me it's got to be open all the time. I mean, because, is the way, that's the way I would read that. Because it's, because I could see somebody coming up and if they knew that there was a written ordinance and they said, you know, I want, that was at the park or at Sun Gardens and need to use the restroom and it was closed, they're violating their ordinance because it wasn't open to the public. And so I, I'm not sure how you, how you can word that otherwise, but that's the way I would read it. And if I was to argue on that issue, I'd say that here, here I am on a Saturday, the business isn't open, neither is the restroom, and this says it should be open to the public. So I, I mean, I don't know if I'm.
Well, but I think we're, we're talking the, the potential of it being a weekend thing, Saturday, Sunday being open, Monday through Friday. You've got City Hall, which is right across the street there, would be open. And so again, it's providing that flexibility. To Councilmember Deras's point, we know people can complain and sue for any potential, you know, splinter that they get in their finger by playing on a swing set. But in that, in that reading, I mean, in your expert opinion, are we, are we safe?
I, I would say, I, I would say yes, because you're addressing the topic of needing to have the public restrooms, but you're not creating a, you're not saying something like what Councilmember Deras, where you're not saying shall be open to the public at all times, which I then would say, okay, that now that says at all times. But just open to the public is, I think, broad enough to leave that flexibility to say, okay, this is a negotiable, what we mean by having to be open to the public.
So could we do something like, to the public for hours to be determined? Or something like that, just so?
Now, that, that, I'd be comfortable with that because that, that shows the flexibility and that it will be determined at some time. But just leaving it open, I, I mean, again, if it's legally, if legally I'm off base on, on the way I'm reading it or understanding it, then, then I'm okay with that. But the way the mayor just mentioned, having it worded in such that were to be determined. And then somebody goes, you know, when this building was built, this is what was determined. Then that, to me, that satisfies any argument of anybody coming forward complaining that we didn't hold up to our end of the deal.
I think I might ask our city attorney if he wants to chime in on, since it's legal language and.
I think, I like what the mayor said, for hours to be determined by the, for hours to be determined by the city, so that it's clear that it's the city is making that decision.
Perfect.
Much better. Thank you.
Over to the public during hours to be determined by the city. It's a good team effort here. All right.
I would be comfortable making the motion that we approve staff's recommendation with the addition of the language on the restrooms, including hours to be determined by the city.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Mayor Protem Newsom. And the city, WC manager, city clerk will now read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Atascadero, California, amending Title IX, Planning and Zoning, Section 9-3, Article 26, adding Section 9-3.682 to add a new plan development overlay zone number 37 for the five vacant. For the five vacant lots surrounding Centennial Plaza, lots twelve through seventeen. And determining this ordinance is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darius?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we are now on to our management report. We have our fiscal update, which is. Our Director Rangel.
Thank you very much. Let me go ahead and pull this up. Okay, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity to. To share these this fiscal update with you. For this evening, this will just be a report that is for receive and file. Sorry, a little technical difficulty soon. Okay, sorry about that. This whole hybrid meeting thing getting things, all the technology worked out. All right, I will go ahead and and start as we're getting this pulled up. Just to kind of review in summary, the fiscal and infrastructure efficiency and sustainable sustainability is one of the key. Priorities of the city and the community. The city is currently in the middle of a two-year budget cycle. That was derived during the COVID period. COVID obviously upset the. The the economy both locally and throughout the world. The fiscal strategy helps to insulate the city from economic unknowns like we just had with council or with COVID, sorry. And and are still experiencing some of that those COVID impacts. Staff believes that the finances of the city are currently stable and measure D twenty is providing a lot of urgently needed expenditures. Providing for urgently needed expenditures. Staff continues to monitor the financial performance and economic trends. Property tax revenue is the city's largest single revenue source. The city's twenty one, twenty three budget estimates that. Property tax revenues make up about thirty nine percent of total general fund revenue. This is excluding measure F fourteen funds. The council's focus on economic development is helping over time to expand the taxable property base. For every one million that is added in new construction, ten thousand a year is paid to the county in property tax. And about sixteen to eighteen hundred of that comes back to Atascadero's general fund. A steady growth trend in property tax revenues is expected. The county of San Luis Obispo projects that increases in assessed valuation countywide will be about four percent next year. The property taxes that are due in the current fiscal year were calculated based on valuations determined in January of twenty one. Because property tax revenue is based on the assessed value of the property. At the beginning of each calendar year, it's a very stable revenue source. And typically doesn't lend itself to more drastic fluctuations in the economy. As maybe some other revenue sources do. And we didn't really see any negative effects related to COVID COVID impacts. Beacon Economics did a an outlook for spring of twenty two for California. And they forecasted that housing prices in the state will continue to rise throughout the end of the calendar year. UCLA Anderson forecast from last month predicts that relatively rapid growth in home building in the state. Will continue. However, Beacon Economics in their United States outlook. Felt that there was some unsustainable overstimulation of the economy. And at some point, we would probably need a course correction. What that looks like right now is unknown. So we have to keep monitoring this. What we do know is that here in the Central Coast, we have beautiful weather and a beautiful environment. And we expect that that will help to support assessed values. Additionally, the city is seeing a lot of development with the economic hotspots. That will not only increase the assessed role, but also bring much needed head of household jobs to the community. This in turn is expected to help support the value of the housing market. Historically, sales tax revenues averaged about eighteen percent of general fund totals. This has changed during due to the generosity of Atascadero voters who approved this sales tax measure D twenty in November of twenty twenty. Fiscal year twenty twenty one was the first year to reflect the sales tax measure D twenty revenue. The city's twenty one, twenty three budget estimates that sales tax revenue, including measure D twenty. Will average about thirty four percent of total sales tax revenues. Or a total general fund revenues. Sales tax is arguably the most volatile of the major revenues and is highly reactive to local, state and national economies. This graph includes both the Bradley Burns, the one percent sales tax revenues as well as measure D twenty. And illustrates the impact that measure D twenty has on our sales tax revenue. Starting in twenty nineteen, Assembly Bill one forty seven, eighty one forty seven, expanded the collection of sales and use tax. From outside of the state sales. As a result, our sales tax revenue from these pools experienced healthy increases. This new revenue largely offset a lot of the COVID nineteen impacts that we saw in sales tax declines. In fiscal year nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty one. The city has projected that Bradley Burn sales tax revenue of will be about four point five million. In the current fiscal year and and about five point two million for the measure D twenty revenue. Based on current trends, our sales tax consultant HDL companies. Is projecting an additional ten percent increase over our projections for the current year forecasts. Despite higher interest rates, inflation and prices, HDL also projects statewide trends above average growth. And sales tax revenue for twenty one, twenty two with a deceleration next year. And the following year before returning to more typical growth rate in about twenty four, twenty five. Atascadero doesn't necessarily follow these trends exactly, but it does provide some good overall trends. Of Atascadero's sales tax revenue, about seventeen percent is due to sales from fuel and service station. Service stations. Strong short-term gains are projected in this industry for the current year, followed by long. Long-term annual projected growth of about two percent. For the period from July through September of twenty one, the building and construction industry. Made up about sixteen percent of the city's sales tax revenue. HDL projected this sector would continue relatively strong growth through March of this year through last month. And then would flatten out through March of twenty twenty three before it resumes a modest growth rate between two and five percent. Through twenty six, twenty seven. Transient transient occupancy tax or TOT is revenue collected from guests staying at lodging facilities within the city. Prior to COVID nineteen, the city had seen sizable increases in TOT revenues. With the council's emphasis on promotion and economic growth. And the efforts of Atascadero's Tourism Business Improvement District. TOT revenue was significantly impacted by COVID nineteen and travel restrictions. During the twenty one, twenty three budget cycle, staff estimated that the TOT revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty one. Would increase by about eleven percent from the prior year. Actual TOT revenues exceeded these estimates for twenty twenty one. And saw an increase of twenty three point three percent over the prior year. TOT is now the third largest source of general fund revenue. Revenue for the first two quarters of the current year is already at seventy seven percent of projected revenue for the year. TOT is expected to exceed revenue projections during this fiscal year. Employee services. The city is a service organization, as we know, and employee services are the backbone of that. The largest portion of general fund expenditures is dedicated to employee services. An average of about sixty five percent of general fund expenditures for the two-year budget cycle. Were allocated directly toward the cost of employee services. The city has been able to stay within its financial constraints only with the cooperation of its employees. While there are some differences in benefit packages between jurisdictions. The city has consistently been among the lowest total compensation for most positions. The passage of measure D twenty has provided much needed funding to support city staff. Both public safety and staff citywide. Updated salary schedules were included in the negotiated memorandums of understanding that were effective last July. A portion of measure D twenty funds allocated in this budget cycle to salary changes. Has been in an effort to bring those salaries more in line with other competing agencies. The intention of the citywide salary change is to increase staff efficiencies. Provide improved services to the public and to reduce long-term costs by attracting and retaining qualified professional employees. As a result of all these changes, the police department has been able to fill most of their. Officer vacancies and public safety dispatch positions. In addition to those salary changes, the budget also allocated funds for new positions, including five new police officers. A new public safety dispatcher, a website, social media technician and confirmation of a battalion chief and a firefighter. About fifty seven percent of the city's general fund expenditures is devoted specifically to the police and fire departments. This includes the cost of each officer, firefighter and their equipment, supplies, training and other costs. Along with increases in the employee services, measure D twenty funds allowed for increases in the operational budgets and. And special and capital projects. Of the total measure D twenty allocated in the twenty one, twenty three budget, seventy nine percent went towards public safety. Which includes police, fire and public works in categories of employee services, operating budgets, equipment and vehicle purchases. And reserve for future equipment and vehicle purchases. Council approved a balanced strategy for the use of measure D twenty funds. The balanced operational expenditures with one-time expenditures in order to accommodate for future growth for measure D twenty funds. Calpers retirement costs are another area that staff closely monitors. The ongoing normal costs of retirement and the Calpers projected payments for unfunded accrued liabilities or UAL. Are included in the city's existing seven-year projection. Calpers reported a twenty one point three return on investments for the end of fiscal year, June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. This prompted eight point two percent reduction in the discount rate to six point eight percent. This will affect Atascadero's rate starting in twenty three, twenty four. This is due to Calpers funding risk mitigation policy, which states that double-digit returns. Will trigger a reduction in the discount rate used to calculate employer and pepper member contributions. Calpers reported that the market value of the total fund was four hundred and seventy seven point three billion as of June thirtieth, twenty one. Which is an increase of eighty four billion over the prior fiscal year. The funded status of the overall perf was estimated to be at eighty percent under the new discount rate. City staff will continue to monitor Calpers, the expected investment returns and other factors that may have an impact. On the city's current and future budgets. This familiar graph is of our financial strategy. We see this graph as the key to continue to build reserves in periods of financial growth. And to use those reserves wisely in periods of economic downturn. This strategy insulates us from the swings up and down in the economy and from unknowns like the dip. We have taken and we are taking with COVID. The twenty one, twenty three budget cycle includes the use of just over two, two point six million in reserves for the two-year period. In order to maintain consistent level of city services. The seven-year projection in the budget shows the. That starting in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four, those reserves will begin to be rebuilt again. And in conclusion, I'd just like to. Follow up saying that, you know, the the key priority of financial sustainability is really important. And I I appreciate the council and the community taking a really strong. Opinion of that, that that is a high priority and that really allows us to do a lot of other things throughout our city. That would really upset the economy, but because of our financial strategy, we have been insulated somewhat from that. And have been actually building up a little bit more in some areas that were unexpected initially. The city continues to run a lean focus, run lean focus on priorities and is on target with our forecast. Measure D twenty is terrific. It's providing for a lot of critical expenditures. And we will continue to look for opportunities, grants and and other efficiencies and continue to monitor. Economy and our performance. And that concludes my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Rangel. I appreciate that you you brought this forward. We've been having a lot of conversations. Well, we always have a lot of conversations about money and budget and things like that, but really a lot more over the last year since the passage of D twenty. And and getting all of you involved. You're you're you've always been welcome to the budget process, but a lot more of you became engaged with the passage of D twenty. Engaged in the budget and what's going on with our fiscal situation. You heard last week when the the chief updating us about. New positions being brought on in the police department. You've seen us just in this year approving purchases of equipment, CAT RMS system. We did the repeater radios. So it's exciting to see how. How the the fiscal policies that we're putting into place, the the D twenty measure that all of this is coming together. To accomplish the the goals that we have as a community. So thank you for the thorough report and and really, we always talk about how lean we are. And yes, that is a at a policy level decision, but I see it with every single one of the employees that we're always looking to be scrappy. And figure out a way to do it in the most economical way. And so we very much appreciate you for that. So I'll ask if we've got any questions of staff. Councilmember Borbo.
I have two questions. Jerry, if you could go back to the pie chart showing the revenue sources. Two questions there. You indicated that the sales tax figure thirty four percent does not. Include measure F fourteen, which is the additional half cent sales tax that. Voters passed in two thousand and fourteen and we, the council, expended exclusively on road repair. On the property tax piece, thirty nine percent, does that include or not include the additional revenue achieved through the. Mallory's Community Facilities District additional surtax and property charges that some. Property owners pay.
That does not include that amount.
Okay, so that thirty nine percent is without the CFD revenue.
Correct.
Okay, got it. And then on this pie chart, the other taxes, is that is that where TOT resides?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's it.
Any other questions? All right, so you know, questions, I will go to the public. If there's any member of the public wishing to speak, we are taking no action tonight. This is a receive and file. We've got a member here in the public and if anyone's on the webinar, go ahead and raise your hand and get ready.
Thanks, Council. Jeff Austin, once again, I have a couple of quick questions and I am on the Oversight Committee of the D twenty and. F fourteen funds. On the approximate seventy nine percent of the funds going to emergency services. Is there any crossover of the approximate eight percent? Of the infrastructure also going to emergency services? That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to look to the webinar. If there's any members of the public, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak or press star nine if you're on the phone. I'm not seeing anyone. Luke, anyone on the phone? No, okay, so we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to. Staff for the question, I think you said the seventy nine percent for emergency services consisted of infrastructure, equipment, everything else. But that is a good question. Is there some crossover with that eight percent?
Great question. And yes, that is all included in the seventy-nine percent. The eight percent are other priorities.
All right. Thank you very much and appreciate the thorough report. We will now move on to item number two, Management Report. This is AB four eighty-one Military Equipment Policy, and this will be Chief Bob Masterson.
Last but not least, and exciting as ever. Yes, before you tonight, Madam Mayor and the council is AB or Military Equipment Policy as governed by AB four eighty-one. AB four eighty-one is a law that was passed September of twenty-twenty-one, the California Assembly, and signed into law by the governor, changing Government Code Section seventy, 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 seventy-five. It basically requires that the city police department prepare a military use policy to be presented before the council, which needs to be approved in order for us to use any military type of equipment. And then the California legislation has really made it broad as to what they consider military type of equipment. Fortunately for Tasked Arrow, we don't have a plethora of these items. So before you is the Government Code Section and the adopted proposed policy and proposed ordinance.
Thank you. I will look to council members if we have any questions, and this is a receive and file right now. Any questions? Councilmember Funk?
I just, just a couple of things. With, with the various military, but I understand that, that the requirement is to report if they are used, but not necessarily to report if they are deployed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. And does the department, what, you know, one, the, probably the biggest general concern that one has about military-style weapons is if you get into a situation where the, the usage of those becomes creates a culture of intimidation that changes the way that, that officers see themselves with respect to the public. And with that, certainly not the kind of culture we, we have or want to have in our PD here. Does the department have a way to look at times when the, the gun is deployed? Situations where the, you know, the officer needs to take it out of its protected space and in the vehicle and have it pulled out and ready for use, you know, if it's not, but not fired? Do, is, is there an ongoing review of those kinds of things just to, to be aware of, of any way in which it might, that the weaponry might be shaping the culture of the department?
I, I would say absolutely yes. There's no codified method, but we do an audit of body cam video and all this would be captured on body cam video, so we have the opportunity to catch any deployment of a weapon like that. In addition to that, any type of deployment of the weapon, pulling the weapon out of its locked case. Generally speaking, with our staffing, there's generally a sergeant or a corporal around when this happens. The, this generally just isn't just an officer deciding it because it usually requires multiple officers involved. For example, when we deploy the forty-millimeter kinetic energy, which is often referred to as a beanbag or a foam round, that's always utilized with the addition of at least two other officers covering with lethal weapons, their, their sidearm, their pistol, or the long rifle, the patrol rifle. And the reason we do that is because then we have our, our force options immediately available. We're deploying the forty-millimeter kinetic energy weapon as a less lethal option, and it gives us a greater distance to engage a subject. For example, a taser is good for about twelve feet. Whereas a kinetic energy weapon, the forty-millimeter, that's good for about a hundred feet. So we can back the distance off, which creates a better safety cushion for the officers and the subjects we're encountering. So in situations like that, we have two, three, four people present. Because with, with weapons engaged, we need officers to be able to utilize their hands when, if, if we have to take the suspect or subject into custody. So if we have a rifle and a forty-millimeter, we need at least two other officers to engage with hands. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that, that covered the, the waterfront there. I'm, I'm less concerned, but it's interesting in this policy that one has to have all this reporting for the less lethal weapons, because they're also considered militaristic. And, you know, and you know, that
It's because of the type of weapon we're using. It's a forty-millimeter projectile. The military uses that to launch grenades. We use it to launch a less lethal weapon.
Thankfully. Okay. And then can you clarify why we have something that's described in the reports as a submachine gun?
I can. It's actually from an old task force that the Tasked Arrow Police Department was involved in. Submachine gun clearly are, simply denotes the caliber of the, of the rounds used. For, for lack of better terms, what the general public refers to as a machine gun. A submachine gun would be a pistol round that's capable of being fired, your carbine, at a rapid rate of fire.
Great, thanks. And I'm, in my correct understanding, so we have a number of weapons and different, of different kinds of, of the varieties that are, you know, semi-automatic weaponry that officers on patrol would have, have, you know, would regularly have access if, you know, in a secure environment, if needed, to a semi-automatic weapon so that they're not in a situation and one that they personally maintain and are, are used to practicing with.
Yes, we, we qualify with our, with our patrol rifles on a regular basis. When they're in the field, they're secured in a, in a locking device in the patrol car. When they're not in the patrol car and the patrol cars in the back of the parking lot, it's secured in our armory. So it's nothing, for the most part, that people take home. We do have a few rifles that, that, for example, are officers that are in the task force with the Sheriff's Department SWAT team or S C D officers. They have their rifles that are specifically assigned to them, so they know that and that rifle. And, and really, when you, when you utilize a weapon, you get to know the weapon, so we try to not spread it across the entire department. So you have a familiarity with the weapon you're using.
Good. So the officer, then, officers on patrol regularly have access to that level of weaponry should they be, be in a situation where the criminals that they are facing have that kind of weaponry?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Chief, this is, you know, review, it says review and provide feedback, I guess. My, in looking through this, it looks to me like this is all just complying with the state law. This is a, this policy here looks, it's coming out of Lexa Paul, who writes policy for police agencies. There's nothing particularly discretionary in here that the council, you know, would be adopted and would be different from other cities?
No, not really. The law is required. The council has the option of saying we don't want to adopt it, in which case we'd have to remove those weapons from the police department, but it's always at the discretion of the council.
And then I guess the only concern I have is the, the annual report that's required. Do you see that as going to be a very time-consuming report? Or because we typically wouldn't, you know, do much use of these in a given year, it would be a minimal thing, because it sounds like a bit of a bureaucratic pain in the ass to fill out this report.
On my last part, no comment? On the first, on the first part, I don't see it as an overburden to, to track everything we're doing. We, we capture our use of force now on a different use of force form, so it's a matter of, of, of deserting that use of force form to another area to capture.
Right. But I mean, it talked about, you know, tracking and training time and that sort of thing on these particular weapons. I wasn't sure how easily that is done.
Yeah, it's fairly easy. We, we track our training records now, so it's not an overburden other than just having to sunshine it now.
Okay, well, good. Thank you, because the state has a tendency to adopt things with good intentions, but that, you know, end up requiring a great deal of staff time. So, all right, thank you.
All right. Are we good on council questions? All right. Councilmember Daras.
I gotta figure out where to wave into the camera so you can see me, because you don't look this way. Question I have for you, Chief. In, in the staff report, there's a list of the, all the equipment that is referred to as military-grade. Is there anything not in this list that you wish to have in the list at some point? And if you were to add something, add a piece of equipment that's not listed here, what is that process?
The process currently under the law would be to come back to the council and ask for the council's approval to add that equipment to the military list.
And so, so just at any given time, if you decided that there was something new that you needed, you would just simply come to us. I mean, it's not like a particular. Oh, anyway, I think I got it.
There's no involvement other than the council's
It's just a pretty simple approval. Okay, that's why. And is there anything that you wish to have that, that, that you don't have?
You know, we're pretty well-supplied in this area, to the best of my knowledge. I'll, I'll prep the council now that, as I was preparing this, I'm looking at the inventory of our weapons, and we're probably looking at a couple of years when we're going to have to replace some of our weapons, because the lifespan of them, as we call the micro-movements of just being in a patrol car moving, vibrates the equipment and, and it's, believe it or not, it creates a wear on some of our magnetic weapons. So we'll probably have to look to replace some weapons in the future.
All right, thank you.
I can hear every other department head as one of the council members says, hey, chief, is there anything you need? Saying there's things we need.
I just don't want to beat the business end of anyone of these things. I'm glad you guys are well-equipped.
Need to be, need to be equitable here. All right. I'm going to go ahead and open up this item to public comment if there is any. I am seeing none in the chambers. If there's anyone on the webinar, raise your hand or press star nine on the phone. I am seeing no hands, no one on the phone. We'll go ahead and close public comment, and thank you, Chief, for the report. We'll now move on to council announcements and committee reports. And I will go from my right to my left. Councilmember Funk?
I'm going to report at length on the next item on the work I'm doing with H-SOC and the steering committee. And so I'll, I'll leave that. And then we have the Design Review Committee, which I will be chairing on Thursday, and Mayor Tim Newsom's absence. And if anybody wants to ask what the item is, I'll defer to staff, because I don't have my notes with me on that.
No problem. I don't have anything to add at this time.
Yeah, I would just add, the Integrated Waste Management Authority, or I W M A, at its last meeting, reviewed and slightly revised the amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement because of some concerns and issues raised by the city of Pismo Beach. We had a great meeting and came to some consensus on some slightly changed language. And so that will be coming out to the cities for review and ratification.
Thank you.
And I don't really have much to report, other than I had was, I attended my first meeting with Cap Slow last week, which was more of a orientation for me and got to meet all the board members. I think, I believe most of them, if not all of them, were there. So I'm looking forward to working with that team. It's a great organization. Good, good service that they provide. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. I, let's see, I attended our county-wide mayor's meeting, which I won't give you a report, because Councilmember Funk will be doing that tonight. See, I've got reach tomorrow. I've got the City Selection Committee on Friday and the Regional Transit Authority next Wednesday. So I will update you all on that at the next meeting. And with that, we will move to our individual determination or action, which is Councilmember Funk will be going over some things they're doing at H-SOC and possibly wanting some feedback from us and from all of you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate the mayor's indulgence. She heard this presentation when I met with all the mayors previously. And I'm joining this presentation with Joe Disvonic, who I will come on board for us in, in a moment. He's in, Councilmember Borbo will appreciate that, that Joe just recently retired from a career in the U.S. Army as a logistics officer. And he is now working for the county executive, Wade Horton, as homeless manager. And is busy shaking things up inside the county bureaucracy to move things forward on homelessness. So without further ado, I ask for this, this time so that all of you would be aware of the work that's going on and have the opportunity to give some feedback to the Steering Committee, which we'll be meeting again on Thursday on, on the Countywide Strategic Plan on Homelessness. And we're moving with a great deal of sense of urgency, because we see ourselves at the confluence of both urgency in terms of community needs and opportunity in terms of new streams of funding coming available. The vision, I'll have to find out where I point the clicker. Where do I point this thing? There we go. Okay. Now I've gone about three, three slides. There we go. Okay. We'll get the technology working. So the vision you see here is to reduce homelessness by ensuring that people at risk of losing housing can retain it and those experiencing homelessness can equitably secure safe housing with appropriate supports, kinds of supports that restore people to functioning in the community productively and minimizing trauma to the individual, the community, and the environment. The goal we propose is that within five years, reduce the number of people experiencing homelessness countywide to fifty percent of the current level. That will take a whole of community effort. The Steering Committee that's been working on this, as you see, has a wide range of experiences, city and county government, different parts of the county, community experience, and bring many different kinds of expertise to the table in a small package. To understand where we think that the county needs to go, it's important to understand why, where we are and why we are in this situation. And easiest way is simply to compare where we put pre-pandemic versus now. Pre-pandemic in twenty nineteen being the previous point in time count. That is a census physically of all the homeless persons in the, in the county by physical observation. So what we've seen in that period is that shelter and service capacity have expanded substantially in places, specific places that you see here, both shelter and safe parking. But at the same time, homelessness itself has also been growing. In the homeless management information system, we're tracking an average of two hundred more, almost two hundred more people a year coming into the system than are going out of the system over the last few years. We, there were almost fifteen hundred people counted as homeless in twenty nineteen, of whom nearly twelve hundred were unsheltered. The twenty-twenty-two count was done in the end of February. Those numbers should be coming out by the end of this week. Or at least by beginning of next week. And, but we all expect that this is not going to be pretty news, given what we're seeing in H M I S. You know, and the evidence of our eyes is that this is still a growing challenge. Staffing and sustainability is also a challenge. Our organizations in particular are trying to sustain the, these new expansions that have happened, some of them with like the Eco Passo conversion with one-time money. So on, at the same time, our objective with, with folks who are homeless is to move them back into housing so that they become housed. And we see on the housing side that Motel Six conversion Passau is very effective, added sixteen units of permanent supportive housing. Haslow also got one hundred and fifty-six vouchers. There were six hundred applicants for those vouchers. There are new units under construction in a variety of places, and the county has stepped forward with more funding for what started as thirty now or fifty now, and it keeps growing. And it's been effective. But at the same time, the housing market has tightened. So we see that average rent has gone up thirteen-half percent in this county in the last year and forty-six percent since twenty sixteen. So we've reached the point where the median rental household in the county is spending thirty-eight percent of their income on housing. And in any time you're over about thirty percent, that's financial stress on the family. So what we see is that over half of all the rental households in the county are at increased risk of homelessness because of the financial strain, the housing places on family budgets. We've also seen in the data that, you know, came to this council earlier from Mr. Dunsmore, that the cost per unit of new affordable housing is over five hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a unit. And that is, is being seen in other jurisdictions also. So I'll now speed this up a little bit, but we see a variety of approaches that address homelessness. You have year-round shelters, you've got safe parking and seasonal shelters, outreach programs like showers and meals, and also the prevention and housing support services that are a little bit more financial in nature or interpersonal, but move people back into already-built housing. And therefore, they are less expensive and quicker. So we've seen the increase of one hundred and fifteen beds in shelter since twenty nineteen. We've seen a hundred and ten spaces of safe parking in three different locations, mostly the, the big, what was Kansas Avenue is now referred to as Oklahoma Avenue shelter. Shelter. Those services are just distributed up and down the 101. And what, what we've gotten to is that despite these capacity increases, which now 73% in shelter beds and doubling overall. In this time period, on any given night, we have the capacity now to shelter only 20 to 30% of the number of people identified as homeless in 2019. And keep in mind that these are best case numbers. We know that during COVID, that there's been real strain on the capacity. Echo here in the Tascadero has not been able to use all their beds because of restrictions. By the CDC, 40 Prado that Cap Slow runs that Member Daras will be familiar with soon. Has been, had that same restriction. And we've also had early closures of things and problems with open staffing positions. So what does all this mean for the plan that is being developed countywide to address homelessness? It means that we're not going to get where we need to get by just incrementally doing a little bit more of the strategies we've been doing. That, that's way too little to close this large a gap. So we are emphasizing rapid cycle implementation strategy to add capacity in housing and shelter. We're also moving forward at speed. So essentially what the process we're used to on this council, if you do the strategic planning and then the staff comes back with the action plan. And then we start looking to implement some early wins. All three levels of action are occurring simultaneously. As you'll hear from Mr. Disvonic in a moment. And that's a pace of action that's usually seen in corporate turnarounds rather than public processes. And it requires a lot of very close coordination, but it means we can move at speed. We're going to need innovation and lower cost housing and shelter options. And we're going to need to actively engage persons with lived experience in creating these, the, and refining these plans. And it also means we need to address government, governance and collaboration concerns. So that all areas of the county can move forward together with strategically coordinated action. So this is, as I could put it sort of more colorfully and then to the board of supervisors. The problem, the reason where we are is not that. The individual efforts weren't useful and effective. It's that we brought a garden hose to a house fire. It's, it's an issue of scale. So in terms of how do we coordinate actions so that the work that we do here in a task there, we can be comfortable that our partners in other parts of the county are also doing their part. And not just sending all the homeless folks to us. That's, that's the basic issue with, with governance. We all, and, and the other entities have the same concerns. We know that there isn't a single entity that's in charge. And it's a complicated issue. You've got land use and social services. You have sheltering and services delivered by a mix of, of public, not-for-profit and private providers. You have funding streams that are extraordinarily complex. So, and, and the mix of services is often affected by the requirements of various grant programs. We took the strategy with this plan to say we're, instead of reacting to what can we do best with whatever money we think we can get our hands on. To say, what does our county really need to do? And then let's figure out how we go, go out to get the money to do that. But it also means that we're generating proposals for which the sources of fundings aren't yet identified and that gets complicated. It's, it's uncomfortable. Okay. So you're all familiar with the, the HSOC as I have, bring the reports for that and others have served on it. It has broad membership. Each of the councils has a say in that, but it is an advisory body to the board of supervisors. What we are recommending in our plan for that is to build on the regional housing compact that we all approved. When Mr. Dunsmore brought it forward in the housing element. That, and use that kind of staff-led process to negotiate some more serious data-driven targets. For locations, policies and timing. And to have the staff coordinate this through the city managers and, and county staff. So that we can keep action moving rapidly. And then bring that, bring some larger policy levels back to the councils for approval in a compact. So an agreement rather than, you know, the, creating another government entity. And we did get support on this new approach from Senator Blakeslee and Mr. Gillette, who had, had been. Putting forward an alternative approach to that with requiring a JPA. So in brief, we're looking at a plan that's going to shift in focus over time. With a focus at the beginning, looking at sheltering, the things we can do most rapidly, prevention and sheltering. And also to get better data through HMIS so that we can do better planning. And also coordinate the delivery of services more effectively. Have fewer people get lost in the shuffle, have less duplication of effort. And be able to see where are people getting stuck in the system. So that over time, by the time we get to year four and five, that we're actively tracking and fine tuning and adjusting where the assets need to be. And where the outreach needs to be. And really looking at how to move people out of homelessness back into housing much more quickly. More specifically, you see that focus of the, in the first 12 months on rapid implementation of more non-congregate. Shelter and temporary housing options of all types, pallet shelters, cabins, tiny homes, safe parking, sober living, you name it. There are, you know, a variety of approaches to use, but. Pretty much each community is going to need to be able to look at something additional. If we're going to close the, you know, the over thousand person gap between who can shelter and. And, and who's out there as homeless. And we're also looking at data targets, data work early. And laying the ground for the compact and then doing some more focused efforts on the, with the medical community. Because there are some real opportunities to do more work with Medi-Cal, picking up some of these operating costs. And with a group of folks who have high medical needs. So for instance, the Echo Paso shelter is pretty much full night after night with people. Who are older, who have complex medical and needs, some of them are, yeah, as well as. Mental health and, and addiction concerns. And it's a, people have a complex enough needs that they don't have any place to really move them in. Into, and they're not thriving well when you get those folks into permanent supportive housing. So that's a piece of work we need to do with the healthcare community to address those folks. But is also emblematic of the kind of way we need to be thinking about homelessness so that we look at. Who's getting stuck where so we can move, move folks out of the creeks and into the houses. So with, with that further, I'm going to bring Mr. Disvonic on. And let him talk about how the county is gearing up to implement their piece of this. And you can, and you'll see that there is very active leadership happening now from the county. That, that's in my experience, a very pleasant and helpful change. You know, with the county executive really being actively involved personally in this, in supporting this work. So take it away, Joe.
Hey, good evening, everybody for, for having me. Can, can you all hear me? Oh, great. Okay. So yeah, I'll start off with the, the plan to actually implement the strategy. And the way I plan to do that is here's a pretty simplified, you know, version of. Of how I look at the communication regarding homelessness through bodies of governance that already exist. As Susan indicated, that, you know, we don't want to create a new layer of, of governance in the processes. You know, bureaucracy exists for a reason. And things are working okay in, in many other areas, but when it comes to homelessness, we don't want to add a different layer to it. And that is what the Blakeslee and Gillette, you know, report with regarding a JPA would do. But I feel that we have the processes, you know, can, are already in place in terms of. The people that can, can execute these, these, these processes. And, and that's what this, this diagram is, is sort of trying to convey. So when I talk about a regional homeless action committee, that basically consists of myself. And occasionally, you know, members of county staff with expertise that would meet with the city managers that who meet monthly. And perhaps some of the nonprofits also. But many of the city managers have already indicated that they wish to dedicate at least one hour of a three-hour meeting that they have toward homelessness. They feel that it's that important, you know, that they. Address this topic in their monthly meetings. And even going so far as to say that maybe between their monthly meetings, we have a bi-weekly meeting of sort of delegates of theirs. Some cities have people that they, that they consider community, you know, development or like the city of Slow has a homeless. Director, so to speak, but they all want to contribute more to the planning of, of, you know. Of homelessness operations with the county more frequently and more directly. And, and, and basically that would involve myself with the city managers. Like Susan said, we're trying to approach this in a way, if, if you notice the word countywide strategy, right? It's not a county strategy. And that's a carefully chosen word because we don't want it to be, the county is trying to, you know, beat the cities upon the head and shoulders to make people do things they don't want to do. Because otherwise, you know, that you're kind of getting into the JPA territory where we don't, nobody wants to violate anybody's lame use authorities. And, and, and tell people what, what they have to do in their own city. So. We were trying to really build a, a collaboration. And that collaboration has already begun with the city managers under the leadership of Wade Horton. Who has spent, you know, years in the position, already working with a collaboration of city managers. And I'm sort of, you know, walking in and using that great relationship that they all have to. Build this committee. And, and I've already briefed the city manager, Susan went with me on the very first brief to the city managers back in February. Or maybe it was March. And then I followed up last month to sort of reiterate, you know, some of the things that we talked about. And they really can't wait to get started. I mean, every city manager is in, in their own way, just they can't wait to get started on this process. So next slide, please. So this here, and I apologize for the small wording, but I just want to emphasize that it's not as necessarily important, the small wording as the overall diagram itself. And I think, Mr. Barbeau, you were a military person yourself, and so you might recognize some of these things. This, this is, this is sort of a. You know, a strategy approach that the military often uses, we call an operational approach to a strategy. And really what this is, is the method of implementing a strategy. And, and it's the link between the higher level thinking and the action on the ground. And that's the operational level. So for example, if you, if you went back a few slides and you looked at what, what Susan, if you actually go back to slide 20, page 20, very quickly. The other way.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. But it's, so yeah, if you go back to slide 20, and I call that like that's Susan's, you know, big blue buttons, right? That's her big blue buttons. And when, when she and I. Well, this will work. There you go. So we have the strategy, you know, is, is kind of supposed to be high level, right? Wave tops. Not a whole lot of detail, just general ideas that you want to accomplish in phases. So, you know, phase one or first year, we want to expand shelters rapidly, whether it's in the form like Susan said of, of tiny home villages. Pallet shelters, safe parking, whatever. And then while at the same time, you know, stopping the bleeding, so to speak, of preventing homelessness from growing. And then we supplement that with the complex operation of improving our data. So these are the big blue buttons, right? So that's the strategy. Now if we forward back to page 23, please. And now what these lines of effort are on the left side. So a line of effort is defined as a series of related tasks. That when combined can accomplish a specific goal in order to complete a strategy. So here we look at line of effort one, which is build shelter slash housing, which is affordable and appropriate. On the left side, as you move through time, all those green diamonds are very specific projects. That will lead to the end state of that line of effort, which is on the far right side. Which is a mix of safe parking, transitional shelters, emergency shelters, low-income housing. Permanent supportive housing and special needs housing exists to reduce unsheltered living. So that is ultimately the world that we want to live in when it comes to the main effort of, of, of addressing homelessness, which is building housing. Even within our own ranks, so to speak, you know, there are people that get confused that they think the goal is to build housing. And the goal is not to build housing. The, the goal is to reduce homelessness. And there's more than just building housing to do that. We can't build our way out of this, you know, so we have to approach it with. Now, lines of effort themselves require prioritization. And as you know, that if you have too many priorities, then you don't have any priorities, right? So here in the, and when you come up with lines of effort, you have one main effort, which is building housing. Yes, that is the long-term goal of solving homelessness, but it takes many years to do that. So when we talk about housing, we're defining it in several ways. Some of it is tiny home villages, pallet shelters. And safe parking and other, other ways. But there are other things you can do in the meantime. To help support the goal of reducing homelessness. And that's what the supporting efforts themselves are. They are subordinate to the main effort, which is building housing. But building housing is, takes such a long time to do, it needs to go on concurrently. We need to do, do these things concurrently. We need to expand services and navigation so we can. Interact with the homeless individuals who live in our communities, or as Governor Newsom recently called them, our unhoused neighbors. And interact with them and understand their individual needs. And, and the only way to really do that and effectively is to take all that information and incorporate it into a data system. That is effective like HMIS and the CES, which we currently use, which is HUD mandated. But it's not very effective because it is locally executed. Which means if you look at the state of California with its 58 counties, I believe. So there are probably nine different systems that are used to represent HMIS and CES. And some, they all have varying degrees of effectiveness. While our own counties, HMIS and CES system, the way it's managed right now, in my opinion, is not very effective. So we need to be able to track these individuals through the pipeline of homelessness on their way to achieving permanent supportive housing. Reunited with families or so forth. And we need to be able to track that so we can continue to support them, but we don't have that capability. Again, we do have a significant population of homeless. We have, you know, anywhere from 18 to 2,500, depending on what's going to come out of this next. Of point in time count. And from a military perspective, or even a county government perspective, right? That's, it's not a lot of people to track. I mean, a battalion in the army has roughly 1,500 to 2,000 people. The county government, you know, has similar amount working for them. You can walk into any personnel office and print a report out with everybody's name on it. And you would know who belongs to that organization, but for some reason, we can't figure out who the homeless people are in our communities. Because we don't have the data systems to support it. And once we can do that. And who these people are and what, and what they need, then we can start making progress on what type of housing, what type of services we need to support them. And it seems like whoever's flipping the slides is telling me I'm taking too long and that's fine. I will move, I'll move right along. And so the two things, and again, this is more of a county, a county level decision. But the two things I'm asking for is there is a building that's about to be evacuated, so to speak, to, to, to another mission. And I want to, you know, I want to take control of that building and use it for a county homeless operations center or a homeless coordination center. And there are differences. Operation Center itself, by that I mean augmenting. The navigation capabilities of our, of our homeless nonprofits out there right now, like Echo. Has navigation centers over there and it's a Tuscadero and it's Paso Robles to a certain extent. Caps slow that I heard Mark visited recently has a great navigation center down there too. And then Five Cities Homeless Center also has a navigation center, but they get overwhelmed very quickly. And when you talk about navigating homeless people through the processes of, of leaving homelessness. It, it becomes very complicated because they're also diverse. And they don't have a place to go back to. So it's difficult to constantly reach out to those people and re-engage them in their navigation out of homelessness. Well, small, you know, oh, there we go again. So anyway, I'll finish it up with the, the homeless operations center, homeless coordination center. Or some concepts that I'm, I'm thinking about developing, but the board of supervisors has approved me to move forward. And that is something I want to use for all the cities and myself to meet and plan and organize things together. Again, as a regional approach without a JPA. But as you know, there's operational control and there's, there's tactical control. So there's opcon and take on. I call it friend con, right? We want to be friends and we want to, we want to basically work together without being directed to do so formally. And that's that's my challenge is to move the have the whole county wide uh, governance move forward, step forward together without actually directing anybody to do so. I think we can do it and we're we're doing it. So finally, there is the the proposition of building a homeless division itself uh, within the county structure, which doesn't exist. I know it's it's almost mind-boggling to think that homelessness has been around for a couple of decades, but yet there is no actual formal approach to it from a government perspective, meaning there's no line item in the budget. So it becomes more difficult to solve when the funding to address homelessness is spread out through EMTs and fire departments and police and behavioral health, but there is no focused approach to it. Well, I'm here to change that in this county at least, and hopefully it will spread, but this is the idea of building a homeless division uh, potentially formalized with the Department of Social Services, which some people argue may not be the best place. By definition, social services is a is a verifying agency for eligibility for, you know, government uh, types of programs. Homeless, the homeless division wouldn't necessarily fit into that, but in the long term, I think it's the right place. And this is kind of a general schematic of what a division would be that I'm trying to build and craft within the structure of the of the county government itself that doesn't exist yet. Um, and I think it would help focus our efforts. So that last slide doesn't apply because, you know, that's that was for the county board.
Oh, actually that
does. I apologize. I didn't see you get a chance to pre-read this, so.
Uh, yes. So we did we did actually update that. Uh, thank you, Joe.
Great job, Susan. My apologies. Go ahead, take over.
No, no, no problem. We, I stuck a revision on him uh, earlier today, but that what we're looking for from this from this council, I should they um, is feedback on the on the plan at this stage uh, to me and to Joe to take back to HSOC and the steering committee. Um, I can't, uh, you know, as a member of this body, I can't have these conversations with you individually, so I need to have this the opportunity to do this in public session so that you can give, give us some feedback on um, what level as we bring this forward, um, the, you know, the full plan has, you know, layers of detail in support of the, you know, if you look at each sort of each line of those things, there might be several elements of it that pertain to how much do we need in outreach, outreach services and how those might be focused. Um, you know, where, what kind of this effort do what we need to make in housing prevention and diversion strategies and how might those change? What kind of training do we need? Where do we need to make shifts and who's doing what resources? Um, but um, the you know, the but the this is what you see here is the overall um, framework of of where the plan is going. Um, so I wanted to give the opportunity for you to give us some feedback at this stage. Uh, we did get um, um, an unusual five-oh level of support from the county board supervisors on this um, and comments uh, of support ranging, you know, from homeless activists to Mike Brown to Sam Blakesley and Greg Gillette, so. We did receive good, good story and and a lot of support from the cities on this. Um, to the staff, so I'm really interested in comments from the council on that, on the plan.
We'll just kind of go from left to the to the right, so I'll start with Councilmember Darris.
I don't have it yet at this time.
I'd say thank you to Susan and Joe and the others who participate in uh, working on this because it's obviously a very difficult subject to deal with and it's good to see a uh, an energetic plan for moving forward.
Yeah, pretentious.
Thank you, Susan. Looks like you guys put together a good plan. Um, thank you for the time and effort you put in it, and it looks like it's going in the right direction, so we're glad to have you present that.
Uh, Joe, Susan, thank you both for being here. Um, I would ask, the the only, the only like question I really have is like you go back to that chart and it seems like a lot of admin cost and ongoing admin, and so I just, you know, again, there was the, you passed it already, actually. And so right there, right there. Um, and so are are those actually, without diving into a bunch of detail, are these people that would actually be touching and working with unhoused individuals and helping to get those services because it just starts to look like a bureaucracy that will cost a lot of money, but wondering are are they really going to be the ones like on the ground providing the services, getting what's needed, or does it become a layer that becomes very costly and doesn't actually provide the service?
So that's a great question, and I can I can answer that. I mean, so this this chart here actually, um, if you look at the asterisks above two people. One is just below the Director of Social Services. It says Division Manager. Um, and and there's also one at the bottom right that said Admin Service Officer. So these are, this is actually putting together a group of people that already exist and are being paid within the county to address homelessness sort of in their spare time. And they, they are sprinkled throughout different departments like social services, planning and building, admit the admin department. Um, we know, so I I feel that the the structure should be built within the Department of Social Services, but there weren't any new uh, positions at this point being um, requested, you know, so they're already out there doing. What's, I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry, just the two.
Just the two. And I'll be honest with you, the Division Manager of Homeless Services um, is is likely myself. And I'm already working at the admin section. So what that means is I would move from working directly for Wade Horton, as I do now, to be his point person on homelessness. Uh, because there is nobody doing it and Wade wants, his his intent is for somebody to go out there and essentially take a sledgehammer to the structure that exists and rebuild what we have for homelessness. Um, and once time passes and we get a line item in the budget, we get things sort of situated. Uh, we could create a division within the social services and that would be me. So I I am also already on that chart. The Admin Service Officer is somebody that would just help with grant management, um, because that is one of the bigger challenges. For example, this past a few years with COVID uh, and the CARES Act, you know, and those things occurring. There was essentially a uh, a torrent of money pouring down to support programs and things that we could do. There there wasn't enough grant managers and grant writers available to catch all that money as it fell out of the sky and turn it into a, I don't know, a usable grant that could be applied properly, right? So we need to, we need to beef ourselves up a little bit in that area and then we're talking about a um, you know, a lower-level admin service officer that would help the grant manager within the Department of Social Services um, perform that job.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, I'll I'll say a couple of things. I think and number one, we as a city um, certainly appreciate that the county is taking us on because something we've always said is well, I know the county feels like it doesn't have funding. The county is the one that gets the funding for social services and these types of things. The city doesn't, cities don't receive that kind of funding. And so whenever we're doing anything to support this effort, which we want to do what we can and we we actually do quite a bit. Um, you know, our team and the things that we're doing, um, we're having to find funding to come from somewhere else and not you know, not, you know, painting twenty-four karat gold letters on the fire truck. I mean, it's, you know, we're squeezing every dollar. So I appreciate that the county i- is willing to take this on. And I also want to say we had this conversation at the mayor's meeting and really all of us agreed that we're glad we're not moving forward with the JPA. So, you know, again, thank you for that and being more nimble that the city managers, we certainly trust our city manager and they're very involved. They know what's going on. And so to be that point person, I think is is really important. So thank you for that. Yes.
Uh, question, well, well, actually, first an observation and a question. I mean, to the point, mayor's kind of question and point, though, the interaction between actually uh, homeless people uh, is usually done by one of our nonprofits. I mean, Echo, Five Cities Homeless Coalition, Forty Prado. Uh, and so um, this, a lot of the staff here I do see is is kind of ma- trying to manage that process. We talked about the addition of money that's been coming along in the last few years due to the state surplus and due to some of the federal COVID-related money. Um, my concern or question is as as that potentially dries up, either in terms of the federal COVID money uh, being used and drying up and or the state going from substantial surpluses to either neutral or potentially deficits if the economy changes. What happens to this staff? What happens to, how much of your program, you know, and your charts um, are in the action shown on your charts are dependent upon a continued flow of substantially more money than there was five years ago?
Yeah, so that's that's another great question and one that we that we wrestle with, but I can tell you that again, in this chart here. Um, you know, let me, let me take a step back and I can, I could throw out at you an observation from one of the nonprofits. Again, this was from a gentleman at Capslow who said that it's interesting because the government itself should never really get too involved in applying services directly, right? That's what nonprofits are very good at. But nonprofits themselves are not very good at administration, right? Because you normally have people that they're they're trained to do other things. So when it comes to higher-level administration, they kind of struggle with that. But the government is the opposite. We're great at administration. We're not very good at applying social services. So it's kind of a a good match, you know, to make sure that we don't have too much uh, money focused on the administration and that we have money left over for the nonprofits themselves to actually conduct uh, services in in the outreach that they do. And this right here represents a group of people that have essentially existed now in the county government for probably the last fifteen years. And what I'm trying to do is pull them together and focus on homelessness. They're doing homelessness, as I said before, kind of in their spare time, uh, sort of outside the guise of actually being homeless-directed, you know, action. And I'm trying to pull them together and say, this is all we're going to do. Um, it's my full-time job right now. And, you know, I and I enjoy that, that that luxury of being sitting, sit around and planning homelessness and I and I struggle with when I work with HSOC and other folks, it's like those people all have significant other jobs that they're trying to do at the same time. And so it's obvious that we just need to pull together a group of really smart people that have training and capabilities to focus on homelessness, you know, within within the government itself, but not make it too large, as you said, so the money itself can, that comes into homelessness can be directed toward uh, the nonprofits and other volunteer type of, you know, organizations to get things done. Um, regarding the funding cliff, you know, that you're referring to, right? So we do have the last several years has been sort of a of, I mean, from the county perspective, it was great that there were a lot, there was a lot of money raining from the sky for uh, you know, COVID-related issues to which homelessness fell naturally a part of, so we could take some of that money and direct it toward homelessness. But the unfortunate part was there wasn't a a significantly coordinated way to do that. So a lot of that money has has, you know, not been as effectively used as it could have been had we had a homeless division. But we're learning from that to make sure that doesn't apply, but to to address your idea of the funding cliff that we are approaching. And how do we sustain um, anything like just that we create? Well, like I said, number one, by creating a homeless division, it's going to, for the first time, put homelessness as a line item budget. A line item on the budget. That hasn't happened before. There are certain things, you know, according to 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 the law that we have to fund and homelessness is not one of them. It's like we could fund it at our leisure, right? And when there's a lot of money it comes through things like COVID and so forth, then we can do that, but it's not necessarily a requirement. Um, you know, kind of just like the Constitution doesn't say there needs to be anything in our country but a Navy. Really, when you, when you would look at the Constitution, the Navy is the only armed force that we're required to support. But we keep for, we keep funding the Army, the Air Force and the Marines because, well, we feel we need them. Um, however, you know, as we, as we move forward with with this uh, with this budget gap, what I'm trying to do is make, I'm making the county look at its budget and make the hard decision and say, one of the things that Susan taught me, okay, as I moved from the military into into civilian government. And and she taught me how money upstream and downstream, you know, can can uh, be be moved around. Is that my approach is, if you look at what the Sheriff's Department does and a lot of the public safety, which is by far the number one funded uh, entity in the county government, and that includes eight different departments from the Sheriff's Office to probation, EMTs and the Fire Department. By far, they have a tremendous amount of of budget. What I'm saying is they are all downstream reactions to homelessness. When you finally have a person, a homeless person, having a psychotic episode out in the middle of the street, right, or or some some sort of crime being committed or some sort of activity going on, the police have to get involved at the EMTs, at the fire and and so forth. But if we take that money out of the Sheriff's Department, we take some of that money out of public safety and put it into a homeless division upstream, we can prevent those problems from occurring in the first place if we were able to address them. So that is my approach to bridging that funding gap is, hey, you know what? I'm going to take you know, Sheriff Parkinson, and I'm going to look at the probation chief Reyes. I'm going to pull them together and have the hard conversation. We're going to take some of your money and put it into homeless, a homeless division.
All right, thank you.
All right, I think what I would like to do is, uh, we've had some conversation here. I want to go ahead and open it up to the public and see if there's any members that public that want to comment on this. We're not, we're not taking action tonight. We're giving feedback to uh, Councilmember Funk in her position on HSOC and of course to um, Mr. Uh, let's see, Dzvanik? Think I got it? All right. Uh, if there's anything uh, in particular in here, you're kind of hearing the things that we're saying, but uh, again, no action being taken tonight. Well, go ahead and open up to public comment and see if there's any members here. I am seeing uh, on the webinar, we have Elizabeth Helderson who would like to speak. And if there's anyone else, go ahead and raise your virtual hand, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. Ms. Helderson, you are up.
Hi, I just want to take a few minutes of your time. I know it's late uh, to say thank you to Mr. Dvaznik and to Susan Funk for the excellent job they have done in putting together a plan that it's almost a miracle, got five votes out of our divided Board of Supervisors and uh, seem to be doing an excellent job of pulling together the cities and government entities and the um, nonprofits in our county to truly work together. I've been a participant in a number of community events lately. And it's obvious that homelessness is the number one issue that people are concerned about in Atascadero. Trying to find a way to balance taking care of these people who really need help and um, make it possible for the community to use our parks and public spaces without having to worry about these unhoused people who don't today have any place to go. So I just want to thank them for the excellent work that they've done and um, encourage our council as a whole to get behind the recommendations that they're making to our county.
Thank you, Ms. Helderson. Uh, next we have Christina Asdulso Speros.
Uh, greetings, council. Can you hear me?
We can.
Um, yeah, I, I just, um, I've been an observer of of the council meetings. Probably almost every meeting for this whole time, um, two years of COVID and um, I feel like I I just sort of, I I want to pay attention to what's going on and I don't really dig deep into what you're going to be talking about every time. I just sort of go with the flow and um, I'm really impressed that this is what you're talking about and that you have um, put together such an impressive plan and I really look forward to watching this um, be implemented if it's approved. Um, yeah, it's it's such an important uh, issue to be focusing on and um, yeah, I'd just like to thank you and um, really show my support for putting a lot of effort into this area. So, thank you.
Thank you. And you're right. I think I have seen you absolutely every single meeting and you did pursue this strategic planning, which is fantastic. But to see you actually come on today, nice to hear from you. All right. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? We've got a few of you. If you'd like to go ahead and raise your hand. Uh, Luke, is there anyone on the phone? Not seeing anyone in the chambers to speak. No one else. So go ahead and close public comment uh, and bring it back. I think you probably have the feedback and and the thanks from us to to move forward.
I think
that you need it, that the county is moving forward, but
um, if I may ask one last question of the council, when this come, when the the whole plan comes forward, there will be, you know, that, you know, greater levels of detail that could be looked up on various things. Um, my assumption is that probably what would be most helpful to this council and to into other councils is to have some specific requests of what does this mean for the city to take action um, on to, you know, that might include, you know, authorization for staff to take certain actions, might include inventorying certain properties for various uses, might include being willing to have have staff and council members present, participate in some kind of a workshop um, where different alternatives were discussed and you did some pairing up of who might, what approaches might work on particular properties in particular cities and areas. Would that be helpful to this council or would you really like to uh, focus more on the individual um, programmatic level of detail? Or would you really like to focus more on the individual programmatic level of detail? Supporting strategies in terms of outreach and shelter and things that and then various types of housing that support the overall effort?
I I think it's the latter, the 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 beginning part that you said in terms of, you know, properties, what cities can do. You know, my assumption is that the city managers and working with Mr. Dzvanik will like, if those things come about, but not necessarily like us saying that we need to see that, I think that at the city manager level, if they're looking at that and they're finding ways that we're going to participate if we're talking about this greater county wide compactor, however we want to describe that, that that would flow out of that. But if we're, I don't know that we need to formalize that unless you see a need for that.
Yeah, no, I'm just interested is which, what level of detail would be helpful to bring back in the whole plan and focus?
So I I guess I'm 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 for less detail at the policy level. And so if I have, if I'm, I have colleagues that think otherwise, I'm open to that.
I think, you know, it just needs to be helpful to us for anything that anybody's asking for us as a council to approve or do. You know, it doesn't have to be buried in detail because we could always ask questions. If, you know, we think something's not answered, but just enough to enable us to make, you know, informed decision.
I'll add to that. I think just the information, the presentation is a lot to digest, but just, you know, more information about the processes that are in place and what's being done at the county level, I think, would be helpful for me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm just going to concur. I totally agree with what's said. Great work on that, on the presentation.
Thank you, and you too.
Thank you for moving things along. I appreciate that. You, you, you got it. And Mr. Dzvanik, you've got a lot of information in you and you've got a lot of energy and focus on this and I love it. So thank you so much. I'm glad you're in that position and we really as a, as a city and county wide can count on you. So thank you.
If you can, thank you very much.
All right, well, good night. Thank you for being with us. And with that, do we have any other individual determinations? I am seeing none. So we are adjourned. Good night all, we'll see you in two weeks.